Call to order the August 3 meeting, quasi judicial meeting of the Cary Town Council. And at this time, I'd ask that you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is to adopt an agenda. I would entertain a motion to do so.
So moved.
Second?
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose. Motion carries unanimously. Our first quasi judicial public hearing is Hawthorne at Parkside. This is a case before us tonight because the applicant has requested modifications. As a reminder to those in attendance, even though we are in the council chambers, this is different from other meetings. This is an evidentiary hearing. It's more like a court case. Council acts like the judge and can only, I repeat, only accept evidence that is competent, material, and substantial. The North Carolina and United States constitutions give the applicant certain due process rights in an evidentiary hearing that council must comply with. The constitution really ties our hands on what evidence we can accept. I apologize in advance for what might seem to be a burdensome or complex process. We will consider competent, material, and substantial evidence from anyone who testifies. By law, we can only accept testimony from expert witnesses regarding this development will affect property values whether any increase in traffic resulting from development will pose danger to public safety. In other words, you can't give your opinion unless you're an expert. To those that are with us this evening intending to testify that are not qualified as experts, we can only accept testimony from you that is factual and what you have observed, not your opinion. Our contractual attorney who's sitting to my left will help me determine who's an expert and what evidence we can consider. The hearing procedures and detailed rules are attached to the printed agenda. All speakers who want to speak during this public hearing must be administered an oath by our town clerk, Mrs. Johnson, who's to my right. We'll pause at this time to allow those individuals who would like to speak at this public hearing to approach Mrs. Johnson and receive their oaths, and council will refrain from taking action until this has been completed. financial relationships, specialized knowledge, or close relationships to disclose to an affected person to disclose, starting on my left with Mr. Yerha.
I have not.
Mrs. Bush.
I have not.
Mr. Frank.
No, sir.
I haven't either.
Mr. Smith.
Mr. Robinson.
I have not.
Mr. George. All right. Based on the evidence that you've heard from council members, at this time, I would invite anybody party to this matter that has an objection to any council member's participation in this hearing. Seeing no one, we'll open the quasi judicial public hearing, and Mr. Hales of our staff will introduce the hearing. Mr. Hales.
Thank you, council. Good evening. The first hearing this evening is a request for consideration of a multifamily development in northwest Cary. This item is before council this evening due to the number of units being proposed and the nature of the modifications being requested. The subject property is approximately seventeen acres located at the intersection of NC-55 and O'Kelly Chapel Road. The site is across North Carolina 55 from the Parkside Town Commons Shopping Center. Most of the surrounding property is largely undeveloped. However, there is a 4.5 acre daycare and office site located northwest of the property. The property is in the Evans Farm neighborhood of the Austin Regional Activities Center. The majority of this parcel is entitled for only residential uses, and a small amount of commercial, about fifteen thousand square feet, and a moderate amount of office uses, sixty-five thousand square feet, are permitted for the entire TAS along the NC-55 corridor. The site is currently vacant and wooded. There are no champion trees on this property. The trees range from twenty-eight inches up to twenty-eight inches in diameter. There are two stream buffers that cross the property dividing the site into three parts. The proposed development is contained predominantly within the central portion of the property, which is the largest chunk. The center of the site sits on a ridge which falls approximately forty to forty-five feet to the adjacent creeks on either side of it. Development plan is for construction of 204 multifamily units located in three buildings. These buildings face a new internal street being constructed connecting O'Kelly Chapel Road to NC-55. Parallel parking is provided along this new street for convenience. However, the majority of the parking is located in surface lots to the side and rear of the proposed buildings. The plan includes the greenway shown along the eastern stream corridor, and this greenway will connect up to the intersection of NC-55 and O'Kelly Chapel Road with a section of street-side trail. Changes have been made to the plan shown on the screen since the original scheduled hearing date, and we didn't have time to update it. The applicant is proposing to continue sidewalk westward to Austin Avenue, and the plan also includes sidewalk construction on NC-55 now all the way to the intersection, which includes covering the piece that is not under ownership of this applicant. Stormwater mitigation on the site is being accomplished through a pair of underground stormwater control measures. The first is along the internal road close to NC-55, and the second is under the northeastern parking lot. The proposed buildings are four stories and use a traditional garden apartment style form. The exteriors consist of brick and stone lower floors with cementous siding and panels on the upper floors. Uses a cool color palette using blues, grays, and slate tones. A clubhouse and pool are being provided to serve the community's recreational needs. The project does include two modifications to the town's development standards. The first is a request to reduce the required parking from the LDO requirement. The town requires two and a quarter spaces per unit plus an additional half a space per bedroom over the second. The planned unit mix provided by the applicant requires 471 parking spaces at a ratio of 2.3 spaces per unit. The applicant proposes to provide 330 spaces at a ratio of 1.6 spaces per unit. This is a 30% reduction from the town standard and the maximum reduction council may consider. The second modification is a request for a partial payment in lieu of construction of O'Kelly Chapel Road. The planned roadway widths map of the Cary community plan shows O'Kelly Chapel as a six-lane median divided road. The existing road is a four-lane median divided road along most of the existing 1,400 feet of frontage. The road then transitions to a two-lane undivided section as it approaches Austin Avenue to the west. The project is required to dedicate right-of-way and widen the road along its frontage. The project does include the thirteen feet of right-of-way dedication required. It also includes construction of a second through lane and median from NC-55 to Austin Avenue. However, the project does not include construction of the required third through lane. The applicant has committed to construct a sidewalk and curb and gutter from NC-55 to Austin Avenue, and the improvements would extend about 280 feet beyond the property. So on the slide, you can see the extension of the third lane shown in orange and the median in green, and this says, "Extension of the street-side trail." We found out today that it's actually going to be a five-foot sidewalk going from the greenway connection to the west Austin Avenue, but it does include the 280 feet beyond the That concludes staff's introductory presentation. We will return to provide professional observations following the applicant and any other speakers, and I will now turn it over to Mr. Burns to present on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Hales. At this time, I'd invite the applicant's attorney to present arguments and evidence in support of the application by addressing the applicable approval criteria.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Keith Burns. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. As Kevin mentioned, there really are only two issues before council tonight. I think staff and the applicant are in agreement that the rest of the criteria have been met, and so we're really here to talk about the parking reduction and about changes to roadway improvements. You'll hear from the applicant himself in just a moment, and then in addition to that, a traffic engineer and behind that, an expert with Army Corps permitting issues, because Army Corps permitting issues figure very prominently in the discussion that we'll have tonight, and we will endeavor to be very brief around all of that. I have a couple of slides regarding parking, and then we'll actually have a handout, I'm afraid, for the roadway. So this is a developer that's been involved in a number of projects across the state over a number of years, and a developer that not only develops the projects but also owns and operates them after the fact. The developer focuses more on bedrooms per space than on units per space because the developer has found is a better way of estimating parking demand. And you can see here the last four projects that the developer has done, that most of those have ranged from a low of .77 units per bedroom to a high of 1.05. The one thing to note about the 1.05 is you'll see that it's Chapel Hill Housing, and as you might expect, that is in Chapel Hill, and it is heavily student reliant, so there are more parking demands. So developer thinks .09 is about right for parking. In this instance, we are offering up .08, so basically one space per bedroom. And as you heard Mr. Hales say, that is less than is required by the ordinance, and it is about a 30% reduction. It's actually 29.99 something. That reduction eliminates almost an acre of pavement, which I think is a good thing and consistent with the environmental concerns that you also often express. And it is consistent with two projects that you've approved recently, and so we're hopeful that, as you have found in those projects, the reduction in paving and some very numbers-driven assessment of the total number of spaces that are actually involved would be compelling here as well. I want to talk, and I'll actually roll back a couple of slides just to talk very briefly. Kevin is correct. There are a few things that the applicant is proposing in connection with widening. The LDO would require, in this area here, three lanes. The problem with that from the applicant's perspective is that there are three lanes here, but there are only two lanes across. The developer of the parcel across the road was given a payment in lieu of zero, and so that third lane has not been completed over there. So you would create three lanes with no receiving lane for one of them across the street. Moreover, if you go another quarter of a mile or so down there, you run into the railroad tracks at a dead end, and so there's not much place for those two lanes that are there now to go other than into the shopping center, and a third would be of questionable value. You'll hear our traffic engineer talk about that. The developer wants, though, to make traffic improvements in the area and wants to have a meaningful impact, not only for the benefit of the area but also for the benefit of this project, and has proposed the road improvements that you heard Mr. Hales describe from the project back toward Austin Avenue, which will have, in our estimation, significant benefit, and then also some additional sidewalk here that would not otherwise be required because it's not in front of the property that the developer's here to talk about. So in sum, while we're asking for what I have dubbed, tongue a little bit in cheek, a pavement in lieu, we really do want to do something different, but at the end of the day, something that is, in our estimation, in the long-term benefit and interest of the town. And so with that, I will ask Frank to come up. Frank is the developer of the project. He can introduce himself a little more and tell you a little bit about his goals and about his parking experience and about the traffic desires, and behind that, we'll have traffic engineer and consultant.
Good evening. My name is Frank Ford. I'm with Evolve Companies. We're the developer of the site along with Hawthorne Residential, who will be actually managing the site once it's constructed. I may ask for a little bit of help on the technology part of this. Well, there we go. Mr. Burns had asked me to speak a little bit about parking, and I think you've seen these slides. We love to get one parking space per bedroom, and we're really there. I think we have .998. I think we were four parking spaces short of having one parking space per bedroom. And we've done that based on two things, really, and this project does it. We get two spots for each two-bedroom and each three-bedroom. I think it's rational, and our experience has found that a two-bedroom and a three-bedroom apartment require two spaces. The one-bedrooms mostly require one space and in some instances require two spaces. So if you look at our bedroom count and you go through the numbers, I think the spaces are there. What we find is that's more important, quite honestly, than the actual number of spaces, or maybe not more important, but certainly is important, is what I call convenient parking. And what I've done on this slide here is I've developed or I've put thick black lines around and divided the property into three sections. And what you'll see there, or what I attempted to show here, is that there's enough parking immediately adjacent to those places where people will enter and exit the building. And so one of the things that we often find, especially if we were, and not to criticize the ordinance in any way, but if we were to provide all of the spaces that were required under the ordinance, we feel that many of those spaces wouldn't be convenient to any of the users of it. So that if, for instance, we were to build a parking lot between the piece of property that we don't own and the exit road onto 55, while those spaces would be there, they would be of little or no consequence because people just don't use them, and they would find other places within the property that is not striped and not convenient or more convenient to use. So that's the justification for the parking reduction. With respect to the roadway improvements, it's been my understanding that what the ordinance required us to provide was a third through lane at the intersection of O'Kelly Chapel and 55. And if you guys have ever been there, on the other side of 55, there's only two lanes to accept the three lanes that are being required. So it's my understanding that had we built the required third through lane, it would be a striped lane and of no use currently and wouldn't technically be used until O'Kelly Chapel on the other side of the roadway had three lanes constructed on it. And I will say that that's all finished. It's paved, it's curbed and gutted. And so as an alternative to that, what we have proposed, and what I think, I hope, makes sense to you because I think it makes some sense to me, but a lot of stuff that makes sense to me doesn't make sense to anybody else, I'll add to that, is what we will do is we will provide curb and gutter from 55 to Austin Avenue. We'll provide sidewalk from Austin Avenue to 55, and a large portion of the, or some portion of the sidewalk, will be the ten-foot trail that will continue the trail as it goes through. I think this will do two things that are really important. If you go out there where Austin Avenue, when you're coming from the New School, and I apologize for not knowing the name of it, there are two through lanes on the east side of O'Kelly Chapel until you get to Austin Avenue, and when you cross over there, you get to one lane. And then as you go down for a portion of it, the one lanes become really five now. And I think any of us who have driven know that the number one cause of traffic, no matter where you are, is when you go from two lanes, or three lanes to two lanes, or two lanes to one lane. And so what our hope is, is that we'll have two through lanes from Austin Avenue all the way to the intersection. I think that'll provide a great deal of traffic relief, but I also think, from my perspective, and it may be somewhat selfish, but I think it helps the town as well as helps me, is it completes that section of roadway so that in front of my project and for O'Kelly Chapel on that east side will be sidewalk, curb, and gutter the whole way. So I think it makes sense. I hope you do as well. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Mr. Silverstein, did I hear, he was making an opinion about how traffic would flow and should or shouldn't flow, in his opinion, but he hasn't been proffered as an expert to tell us that traffic problems, when you narrow down lanes, we need to hear that from a traffic expert, and that's kind of a, this is that area of hearing testimony from a non-expert.
What your policy statement actually says is that if someone who is not an expert expresses an opinion, it must be corroborated in order to be considered by you.
Okay. So at this point, it's an opinion until it's corroborated. All right. Thank you.
And with a great segue from Councilman George, I'd call our traffic engineer to come talk about this project. Benjita, if you'd come introduce yourself and talk about the project, please.
Good evening, council. I am Benjita Johnson, and I am the Traffic Engineering Department Manager at SEPI Engineering. We were tasked with completing traffic analysis and providing that memorandum and analysis information to the town's transportation department. As part of that analysis, what we did is we put together traffic generation, trip generation for the proposed development. Our analysis included 204 units for the apartment complex. During the AM peak hour, the development is proposed to generate about 104 trips in the AM peak hour and 130 trips in the PM peak hour. As part of our analysis, we also compared the existing traffic conditions, the future traffic conditions without the development being in place, and then the impact once the development was built as proposed. To the point that was made just a moment ago, as far as the traffic and the capacity analysis, under the existing conditions, you are looking at level of service E at O'Kelly Chapel and Green Level Church Road, level of service D and E in the AM and PM peak hour respectively at O'Kelly Chapel and NC-55. You are also looking at level of service B at the NC-55 and I-40 westbound ramps, and then level of service C and A in the AM and PM respectfully at I-540 eastbound ramps. With respect to Austin Avenue, that is currently an unsignalized intersection, and so where you have that lane, the incontinuity in the lanes there, where you're going from a widened two-lane section back down to the one lane right there at that intersection, you're currently experiencing a level of service F on the side streets, that would be the north and southbound approaches. The approximate delay especially is heavy for the southbound left. It is in excess of 1,000 seconds during the peak hour. So under the proposed conditions, what we did is we looked at the development with the original improvements that were proposed. However, we did not consider the capacity, additional capacity improvement of the third eastbound lane at that intersection. The reason we did not do that is because that lane, we assumed that that lane would be striped out until such time that the railroad improvements would be made in order for the traveling public to be able to continue eastbound across NC-55. So our analysis is showing that in the 2019 build condition, that the levels of service are going to be similar at all of those intersections that I mentioned before, and that the 204 units that are being proposed do not add a significant impact to any of the delays at the intersections. If that improvement is made where we go to a consistent two-lane cross-section along O'Kelly Chapel, the delay specifically at Austin Avenue can be cut in half, especially for that southbound left movement, which is experiencing quite a bit of delay. That movement could be reduced from over, close to 1,900 cars, I mean 1,900 seconds of delay, down to about 500. So that's a quarter of that delay can be reduced just by having that improvement. So it's a significant improvement that is being proposed by the developer. Do you repeat that? Is it the second lane that the developer would do would reduce the southbound right turn? The southbound left movement. What you have right now is people are essentially waiting for a gap to be able to make the turning movement, and because they are in a, they are reduced down to the one lane, there's a reduced gap for them. So if there's two lanes there, more traffic can get through the intersection quicker, and so those southbound cars at that intersection are going to get much more gaps, and so it reduces, it cuts their delay significantly.
Was the 1,900 to the 500 was the reduction?
Yes, from 1,900 seconds to 550 seconds.
So reduced by three-fourths?
Yes, 75%. What I meant to say is that it will be reduced to a quarter of what it is today. Yes. Yep. I guess in summary, what I wanted to say is that our analysis shows that the development does not warrant the third through lane. We did not consider it as part of our analysis when we presented that information to the town of Cary, and we were able to maintain a consistent level of service and operations as what you are experiencing today, even once those additional apartment units are built. I would also like to hand out some additional information for council.
And this is new information or information that is in the staff report?
This is new information.
Let me clarify, Mr. Mayor. I believe this is a recharacterization or a presentation of information in the staff report in a different form, a graphical form as opposed to the text that's there.
So usually, we prefer not to have new information, so council has an option at this point. As soon as you get the handouts, you have the option to continue this public hearing until another time so that these items can be reviewed or continued. And I'll wait till everybody receives, oops, I think I grabbed only one of several pages. So is it my understanding that these are new renderings, not new information?
That's correct, Mayor.
Yes, that is correct.
So it's the same information, just in different?
This is just a visual display of that information. So you have three, oh, I'm sorry.
So I just want to see if there's any objection to us continuing with the information just received.
I was hoping we'd get to see this because this is helpful.
Any objections?
No.
No objections.
No objections. Okay. Please continue.
So there are three sheets. The first sheet is an existing conditions figure, and it shows the roadway, the existing roadway from Austin Avenue along O'Kelly Chapel to the NC-55 intersection. What you'll see is if you go from west to east, which would be left to right, there's an existing section of O'Kelly Chapel just to the west of Austin Avenue where you have two existing eastbound lanes. The current striping for that condition shows a single left, a single through, and a right. However, the pavement is, has been, the road has been widened there, and there's pavement that could be restriped to provide two eastbound lanes at that intersection currently. What you see is you go to the east is that you have one existing receiving lane as you go eastbound. As you continue to what is essentially the center of the page, you have what is the proposed driveway for this site development. And then as you continue to the NC-55 intersection, you have two through lanes, a single left turn, and a single right turn lane. We also wanted to point out that there are just two receiving lanes. We also wanted to point out that there are just two receiving lanes as you continue east to the other side of the intersection. And there is some striping there to show what will be a third westbound left turn lane. If you go to the next page, what we are showing here is the required three-lane section that is part of the municipal plan. Again, you have the same two eastbound lanes at the Austin Avenue intersection with a single receiving lane. And then it shows what was the proposed widening for the third through lane from just east of Austin Avenue to NC-55. It shows the tapers from the single lane widening out to the three lanes. It shows where the sidewalk ends, the median improvements that are there to restrict right turns from the site driveway, and then the three through lanes at that signalized intersection. It also still shows that there are only two receiving lanes as you continue east across NC-55. You should note that that required three-lane section requires the new Army Corps permit for the entire six-lane plan. And then the last page shows the developer's proposal, which would show two eastbound lanes just west of Austin Avenue and now the two receiving lanes to the east of Austin Avenue. It shows the sidewalk improvements that will continue from NC-55 back to the west, all the way to Austin Avenue. And it shows that the median improvements would go essentially back to Austin Avenue where you see that westbound left turn lane, still restricting access to right in, right out at the site driveway. And then you see the existing condition with the two through lanes at the NC-55 intersection. There will still be an exclusive right turn lane there.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson hinted at the fact that there are Army Corps of Engineer issues around that. Chris will come up and talk with that. In summary, the Army Corps of Engineers would require a full set of plans for not only the, for the entire six-lane section of the road, which would be problematic. We might later build only a portion of it, but that permitting would be problematic. Whereas, the plan that the developer has proposed could very likely be accomplished under existing permits, which would save some time and might actually happen soon. So, Chris?
Greetings. My name is Chris Heisman. I'm with Wetlands and Waters. Been a environmental consultant for 25 years now. I'm always at a loss where to start because it's a rather complex, own verbiage, peculiar language that we have to deal with here. So I'm going to start by talking about the three-lane alternative. And we had conversations with the Army Corps going back to September of last year. And part of that is defining what is a project and what's a project's purpose and need. And while those sound like easy terms here to us tonight, when you dig into that, it gets very complicated. And one of the things the Army Corps came back to us with was a question of, do we need that third lane to make our project work? And the traffic studies indicated no. So then we started a dialogue with the Army Corps about how they would permit all that. And what that boiled down to was a discussion of an individual permit, which takes 12 to 18 months. It would need to be advocated by the town of Cary according to their transportation plan. And as was alluded to, that would require a larger set of plans, a longer amount of time, and a significant amount of work to get that done. And perhaps, if I can figure out how to work this, let's see here, the site conditions map. It was like the first map. On the existing conditions map, on the right-hand side, you will see the stream buffers. Within those stream buffers are streams. So any additional lane would start to creep into those streams there, and it would start to require more impacts to develop that section of road. And then interestingly, across NC-55, you'll see that there's other stream buffers that some of them have been encroached upon. So what that results in is if we do the, all the improvements on the developer's side, we wind up technically having more impacts, and we've never assessed the far side of O'Kelly Road. Part of what the Army Corps likes to do in these situations is look at eminent domain as one of the tools to look at the least environmentally damaging practical alternative. They call that the LEDPA, and it's part of avoiding and minimizing impacts to aquatic resources. I know that's a very long explanation of something. But if the town wants to advocate it, go through a long process, show all those transportation improvements, and so on and so forth, the Army Corps is going to come back with significant requests for information and evaluation. Now, on the flip side, I've looked at what is currently proposed, and based on my experience, it falls within the realm of what is reasonably permitted by the Army Corps on a regular basis. So from a permitting perspective, which is part of the whole Army Corps Clean Water Act review, the alternative that we're looking at now has less impacts to aquatic resources. And if it meets all the transportation requirements, it's likely where the Army Corps would have us go anyway. So, I feel good about going forward with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hales. You've heard testimony about parking and about the positive impact of reducing the number of spaces and the rationale behind that and the experience that supports that. You've heard that the developer very much wants to improve transportation in the area and wants to do so efficiently, meaning in a time-efficient manner as opposed to being delayed and perhaps denied by the Army Corps of Engineers. So this is plainly a developer who is working to improve traffic as opposed to a developer asking to skate on that requirement. You've heard testimony about the positive impacts of what the developer has proposed to do. And so, the developer and I would ask that you conclude, as you look at those two items and that approval criteria, that those approval criteria have been met. With respect to the approval criteria for the site plan and the development as a whole, I believe it to be the case that staff and developer are all in alignment, that those conditions have been satisfied. And for that reason, you've heard very little, if anything, on that. So as that comes around tonight, we would also ask that you vote favorably as it relates to those approval criteria. All of these folks are here, and they and I are happy to answer questions if you have any.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. This time, I'll invite speakers who have been sworn in and wish to speak in support of the application to approach the podium. And I would invite the first speaker forward. Anyone to speak in support? Okay, moving on. Does any party in this matter, whoops. We now open the hearing to those who are opposed to the request. As a reminder to those testifying, please limit your testimony to facts as you know. The applicant's representative has the right to object to your testimony. He or she may object while you're speaking, and they have the right to do that. Our contractual attorney sitting beside me will help counsel to determine what is evidence and what we may consider. So I'd invite those in opposition to approach the podium one at a time. First speaker. Anyone to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we'll continue. And now ask staff to provide professional observations of the requests.
Thank you, Council. And I'll try to avoid being redundant because I think Mr. Burns covered some of my information in his presentation. So just to recap, the first modification being requested is a 30 percent parking reduction from 471 spaces to 330 spaces. That reduction is a recently approved plan from Council Hillstone at Austin Town Center and Austin Village Apartments. And to put the one-acre impact of that 141 spaces being removed, it's about the same size as the parking lot in the northeastern corner of the site outlined here in red. The reduction in impervious surface accomplished by reducing those parking spaces is consistent with the town's goals of decreasing impervious surface areas on site. And the overall reduction is consistent with the goal of reducing rarely or underused parking spaces on sites. And the nature of the environmental and topographical constraints on the site, as indicated by the applicant, would result in little or no practical gain in open space on the site being achieved by the reduction since there's really nowhere logically else to put parking. The second request is the request for the payment in lieu of 0 percent of the cost of construction of that third through lane. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Dunn in the Transportation and Facilities Department momentarily. However, we would like to point out in Ms. Johnson's printout that was handed to you, page three, and this is just to reiterate the point I made earlier and the change from when we originally put together the staff report. Page three is a plan that was provided to staff and does show the 10-foot multi-use trail, street-side trail, running all the way from NC-55 to Austin Avenue. You can see the wider width there. What I believe the applicant has indicated in his presentation and just prior to this meeting was that the 10-foot multi-use trail, street-side trail, will stop at the greenway connection running along the stream corridor there. You can see it on the map, or on the third page is that little squiggly line running south from the sidewalk. And then from that point, westward to Austin Avenue will be a standard five-foot sidewalk as is typically required by the ordinance. And I will now turn it over to Mr. Dunn and hope you're providing additional feedback on the payment in lieu. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Ken Dunn, Transportation and Facilities. So the applicant has agreed to construct about 280 linear feet of roadway beyond their project frontage, and this will provide some benefit. It will complete the second through lane. I would like to point out, in order to construct that work, the applicant will need to secure off-site easements from their neighbor and also off-site right-of-way. So the construction of the lining of the intersection, NC-55 and O'Kelly, has been one of the bigger issues for the plan. As previously noted, it would require permitting from the Army Corps of Engineers. I'd like to point out that the applicant has proposed to provide a financial guarantee for the cost of the improvements that they are proposing to build, and that we could cash in that guarantee or administratively accept a payment in lieu if the Army Corps chooses to not permit what they're proposing. So I'd like to point out that the project could be completed without any of the improvements being built on O'Kelly Chapel Road. As previously noted, O'Kelly Chapel Road is shown on the planned roadway widths map to be a six-lane divided section. We do still believe, even with this additional information, that that additional width will be needed in the future. We also sat back and compared the proposed plan with future build conditions included with other traffic studies which analyzed the O'Kelly Road, or O'Kelly Chapel Road and NC-55 intersection. All the other studies showed benefit from having additional lanes being provided at the intersection. In particular, the traffic study for Horton Creek Elementary School showed improved operation with the addition of a second eastbound right turn lane, which if the through lane were provided, it could be used even in absence of the additional lanes across the, on the east side of NC-55. Would like to point out that the memo that's been provided by the applicant shows 706 right turns at this intersection in the AM peak and 426 right turns at that intersection in the PM peak. So having additional lanes would provide a benefit there. I'd also like to make sure that everybody's aware, and I think I might be repeating some of what the applicant's attorney said, but they are providing right-of-way an easement needed for the six-lane median divided section. And if in the future, if you were to accept the payment in lieu, and if in the future it were determined that that were needed, the town would need to fund that. I do understand, though, that if they were to come back in and want an amendment, that the widening would be back on the table. They accepting the payment in lieu of zero doesn't take it all the way off the table forever. And that's all I have. I'll be available for additional questions.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Mr. Burns, cross-examination of Mr. Hales or Mr. Dunn's evidence?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Mr. Hales, do you have anything else to add?
We do not. I want to briefly summarize the, because there's a little bit going on in this case. Summarize the actions. Before council this evening, there are four individual decisions you're being asked to decide. The first of those is taking action to bring the property within the town's corporate limits. It's currently in the ETJ, and that would be done by approving Annexation Petition 16A24. Annexations are legislative decisions. You've already had that hearing. And you have complete discretion as to what action you choose to take. There are no specific approval criteria that must be met. Actions two and three are both modifications and can be taken in any order that you so choose. Each one has its own individual approval criteria. For the second, the parking reduction, you may approve that 30 percent parking reduction upon finding that the reduced number of spaces advances the goals and purposes of the ordinance and that the reduced number of spaces is sufficient for the anticipated parking demand. For action on the payment in lieu of 0 percent of the cost of construction, you may approve that only upon finding that the improvements are unnecessary or undesirable at present but will be needed in the future, and that the reduced amount of the payment in lieu advances the goals and purposes of the ordinance. And following that, the final action you must take, or have the option of taking, is action on the Development Plan 15SPO53 itself. There's a list of approval criteria, standard six approval criteria for site plans. I'm not going to reiterate them all here. I would like to point out that, just be aware that disapproval of the annexation petition first would preclude council on acting from anything else. However, you may approve the development plan if you decide to die either or both of the modifications. They would simply have to revise the plan to meet the ordinance. So at that point, we'll conclude staff's presentation. Staff is available. Ms. Lisa Glover in the Attorney's Office is here to provide you an explanation of your revised motions.
Usually at your seat, we give you a motions handout. So I just wanted to explain a little bit because this one is complicated. If you turn to the back page. Mr. Dunn alluded to it, and you've heard folks talk about it. I've got a slightly revised one to hand to you. But we've got our standard condition, you know, if you're so inclined to approve the development plan, I'd ask you to look at these conditions. The first one is the standard one about addressing any DRC comments. The other three, numbers two, three, and four, address the road improvements. And just, you know, make sure we've got locked in what the applicant has offered tonight. So number two talks about constructing the second through lane to include curb and gutter, a median, and five-foot sidewalk. Again, we had to fix that. And there's a reclaimed water line that runs along with that as well. Item three talks about the financial guarantee that Mr. Dunn mentioned. So that, again, because the permitting status of even this improvement is a little bit uncertain, the applicant has offered to put up a financial guarantee for that. And then if, for some reason, they're not able to get their necessary permits from the Corps for the second through lane and the sidewalk and the reclaimed water line, then the town would be able to cash in that financial security. But again, you would be, we wouldn't have the second through lane or the sidewalk or the curb and gutter. We'd have the money, but we wouldn't have the improvement. So that's what these conditions lay out. Number four, you'll see, talks about the applicant diligently applying for and pursuing the permits. You know, as they've indicated, you know, that's their plan, and that this would just say they're going to diligently pursue that. And it talks a little bit about the timing of getting some of the construction done if they're able to get permits. So I'd ask for you to look over those as you're making decisions tonight, and we can answer any questions you have about those.
Thank you, Ms. Glover. We now begin the deliberative phase of the hearing, and I open it up to council members for questions or comments.
I have a couple of questions as well. Can you help me, is there a crosswalk from Parkside Town Commons across 55 at that location, at that intersection?
Do not believe there is currently a pedestrian crosswalk there.
So it's a sidewalk to nowhere. And the next question I have is, there's, on the median discussion as proposed by the developer, it extends the median all the way. So are both entrances and exits out of the private road right in, right out? The one on 55 and the one on O'Kelly Chapel?
That is correct. Both of those are restricted right-in, right-out entrances with the construction, the medians.
So if you're, tell me how someone would get to South Point Mall if they live in that. Would they go out 55, go south, make a U-turn? How do you go west?
How would I go west if I lived?
So in a car. So in a car, from that location.
I would probably head down to, I believe McCrimmon is the next east-west road to the south, because I don't like doing U-turns personally. So I would go there, go across to Green Level Church Road. You could go down, I have done U-turns on 55 at the interchange there at 540.
Which is pretty dangerous.
Could be, depending on time of day.
And is there, is there room for a U-turn? Is there room for a U-turn? Does that, does 55 have that ability? Is there a U-turn only? Is that a safe way for people to go?
I would have to defer to Transportation and Facilities Department on that one.
Can you show us the roadmap while we discuss this? This one has just, thank you so much. So is there, is there potential to eventually have another road come out over to Alston from this project? Is that what that little driveway could be, or?
There is a stub to the southwest which will be part of the future development. This is all in the Alston plan, as is all the property to the southwest. So at some point, as those properties develop, you will have access over to whatever happens on that Alston Avenue piece. Because right now, it doesn't go anywhere. It would take you back up to O'Kelly Chapel.
Ms. France?
Question?
He was going to answer.
Oh, I'm sorry, please.
It was a U-turn question.
I can speak to the U-turn movement. They would have to make sure that happens as part of the approval from DOT, to make sure that you can make U-turn movements.
They, the developer?
Yeah, the applicant.
So when the applicant puts in the request for the right-in, right-out, is part of that request include a safe U-turn? How does that work? Sure.
They would, they would talk to DOT and have to provide mapping at that location to show that they can make a safe U-turn in order to install the right-in, right-out.
Is that part of the normal process?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's not, it's something that as you request the right-in, right-out on a state highway, a U-turn is something that DOT would look at?
Yeah, in this location, certainly.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry, go ahead.
Help me better understand how we went from a ten-foot street-side trail to a five-foot sidewalk.
Me? I will say, my understanding is, originally, when the plan showed the third, I'll pump myself up a little bit, the third unnecessary lane, the Greenway Trail, as you see, goes across the property and then turns right towards 55. And it was my understanding that it always showed a five-foot going in the other direction. I think it was just a miscommunication either between us and staff. I will say, Councilman France, if it's staff's opinion or anyone's opinion that the sidewalk continue at 10 feet, we have no problem putting that in and providing that. But, but the plan initially always showed it as a regular quote-unquote "town-of-Cary" sidewalk in front of our property to where it met the Greenway Trail, and then the Greenway Trail continuing to 55. And so somehow or another, in the, if you will, the going, the back-and-forths, it was, I think, miscommunicated that it was going to be 10-foot the whole way. I don't have a problem with it, or we don't have a problem with it being 10-foot if that's what staff would like or the town would like, but initially, it was five to the Greenway Trail and then 10 to the corner.
Mr. Hales?
Can I add a little bit of context to that, just to?
Well, I'm just, I guess I'm a little confused or curious, or maybe something changed and I'm wrong, but I'm just kind of struggling to understand how a road that's ultimately planned to be six-lane, median-divided one day, is only required to have a five-foot sidewalk along the side of it, when so many other roads in town that are four-lane, median-divided, we require the 10-foot street-side trail. I mean, it seems to me that the five-foot is now what we're requiring in subdivisions, neighborhoods, and things like that, but yet not here on a road that's ultimately planned to be very high-volume and possibly somewhat risky for pedestrians. So just, help me better understand that.
It's a function of the town's adopted Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Facilities, Greenways Master Plan.
Okay.
So to put this a little bit in context, the street-side trail along O'Kelly Chapel Road, even the 400 feet between the Greenway Connection and the intersection, is not envisioned on the plan.
Can you say that again? You talked really fast, so I didn't even understand what you said.
When I talk extemporaneously, I talk fast. So the 10-foot multi-street-side trail between the Greenway Connection shown and the intersection is not on the town's plan. This is originally a greenway that was supposed to be a grade-separated crossing underneath O'Kelly Chapel Road, but we don't have the tunnel there yet, and we're not widening it to its full section. So they're dedicating easements for that future construction, but in the short term, in the foreseeable future, they were making the connection up to O'Kelly Chapel Road, and in order to get that connectivity, we were requesting the Greenway, the street-side trail from the Greenway Connection to the intersection, because there's no plans right now for future development on their side, so there was no foreseeable future for that grade-separated crossing under O'Kelly Chapel Road. So we got the easements, but in the short term, 10-foot multi-use trail. There is no multi-use trail, street-side trail to the west. There's nothing coming from Evans Farm, there's nothing coming from Horton's Creek. That's all five-foot sidewalk along O'Kelly Chapel Road. So this is just a continuation of the standard five-foot sidewalk that's required on both sides of all thoroughfares and collectors outside of those identified in the town's Greenway Plan. Does that add a little bit more context?
Going to the west, if this were a 10-foot trail, is there any intent to have any other 10-foot trails, anywhere like Green Level Church Road, which is not much further west from here?
The closest additional street-side trail runs north-south along Yates Door Road, if I remember correctly.
The closest one?
I'll have Ms. Bailey come in and correct me if I'm incorrect.
Which is less than a mile away.
Good evening, Council. Sandy Bailey, Facilities Planning. So there is street-side trail along both sides of Green Level Church Road to the west.
That's a 10-foot trail?
It is.
And that is, what, a quarter-mile from Alston?
Roughly.
Okay.
And in proximity to the elementary school, right? It's, it's right there at the new elementary school, Horton's Creek?
Fairly close, it is.
Okay. All right.
I have, I have a bunch of questions. I found this actually fairly hard to follow. I don't know why. Oh, good. I'm glad I'm not the only one. Like, I'm like, am I asleep today? Like, what is my problem here? But this is a very complex one for us to understand all the parts. I would recommend, in the future, thank you for this, by the way, this helped a lot, and I'm glad that we allowed it to be used. I would recommend that staff can give us some really clear visuals the next time we have something as convoluted as this. This is, to me, very difficult, so I'm going to just make sure I understand everything. Right now, well, let me say, once you build your two lanes, if you were approved for two lanes, it would be two lanes until you got to that point where turn lane started at 55, going eastbound, and there would be one dedicated left-turn lane, one dedicated right-turn lane, and two straight lanes?
No. If I may, and I think Mr. Dunn may address this, there are two left, there's currently...
Two left lanes there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Either one. At the intersection currently, there are two left-turn lanes, two through lanes, and a right-turn lane.
Correct. Okay.
And so what I'm proposing, or what we're proposing, I think, is what's consistent, which is that we extend those two through lanes all the way back to Alston where they meet the current two through lanes.
Right, and leave everything else the same at the intersection?
By all means. And then somewhat similarly with the sidewalk, when you, when you, Councilman Francis, what's correct, as you walk, it is a, on the other side of 55, through the shopping center, there's a small section of 10-foot sidewalk. But in front of, when Kevin had the previous slide up there, between Alston and Green Level, that's a five-foot sidewalk. So I think, again, it would be somewhat consistent. As you leave Green Level Church Road, you would have two lanes on the south side and a sidewalk, and it would flow into two lanes and a sidewalk. When it got down to where the Greenway Trail intersected with them, it would then become a 10-foot sidewalk.
Got it. Okay. All right, and?
And I will say that we are also providing the necessary right-of-way and easements for the future development of the additional road, when and if it's ever needed. I would point out that the shopping center did the same thing. So whenever, as I said earlier, to have three lanes built to go into two lanes doesn't really make sense on that side, and it doesn't really make sense on the other side, because there's currently only two lanes from Alston all the way back past the school.
We understand that, but you are giving the easement in case it ever needs to be widened, and you are not, you have no, like, you are preventing development on the northwest, northeast, and southeast corners of the property, where it's showing up green. That's not just like future development space, it's actually preserved green space.
By all means, I mean, yes.
Mr. Ford, we need you to use a microphone. There's one at your desk.
I'm sorry. Yeah, so if our site was a football field, from one end zone to the 30-yard line would be undeveloped, and then from 30 to 30, we would have our apartments, and then from the 30-yard line to the other end zone would be undeveloped as well.
Okay. All right, and are you planning on doing any improvements along 55?
Well, the only improvement that I believe that is required, and the ones that we're going to do, is we'll do sidewalk along 55.
The whole length?
From our corner to our property end.
Okay.
My understanding from our engineer is that there is enough right-of-way for us to fit sidewalk across that portion of the property that we're not obtaining, but we will, in fact, put that in as well.
Got it. Okay. I thought you had said that, but I want to make sure, because there was so much information.
Yes, ma'am, and I apologize for that. I wish this was simpler, too, because I'm not very smart.
This is, there's, there's just a lot of pieces to this one.
There is.
And, and the, yeah, the graphics helped a lot, I'll tell you that. The graphics did help, and even more graphics would help. So, and I, and I would say that from the staff, you know, having the staff provide those in the future.
With color, if possible.
I want to make sure, curb and gutter's going to be installed along 55 as well.
Okay, good. That was one, so curb, gutter, and sidewalk along that frontage, including the parcel that is kind of wrapped by your property?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I'll just make a statement. I, I would prefer to see a 10-foot path along the whole frontage, and I think that that could be a good connection. Maybe we need to go back and look at that quarter-mile along O'Kelly and see if there could be retrofitted at some point, a 10-foot path there, to give us that connection. It's much more comfortable, especially with families, and if we expect groups of teenagers to be walking someday over there, you want them to be safe walking on a 10-foot path. So I appreciate you bringing that up, Mr. France. I understand the, the argument about, or the, the presentation of information about the Corps of Engineer, totally get that. What I would have liked to have seen is, what would have happened if you had put in that third lane and it would have been, acted as a dedicated right-turn lane? What would that have done? And I think you guys did not study that. Is that correct, Ms. Johnson? You did not study if you had put in a third lane and it behaved as a dedicated right-turn lane until eastbound, eastbound, south-turn lane, until you, until it was needed for...
That's correct. We did not study it. From our perspective, the trip generation showed that there were less than 10 cars that needed to make that movement out of that driveway, that the majority of traffic, if they were going to head south on 55, would go out of the other entrance.
Okay. Okay, I see what you're saying. Okay. So, thank you very much.
So, Ms. Johnson, before we go too far, before we go to that end of the table, while you're up there, talk to me about queuing on O'Kelly Chapel to take a right to turn south on 55. And the reason I ask that is I'm concerned, will there be potential cut-through in the future, since you can go from O'Kelly Chapel to 55 through the site plan? If you follow my question. So if it's only backing up a couple of cars, then it's not going to be an issue, but...
So could you just repeat it?
Okay. So queuing the right turn from O'Kelly to 55, that was in your traffic study, I'm sure. How much queuing can we expect AM, PM for the right turn? Not the left turn. I know you spoke about the left turn.
There is, oh, at O'Kelly.
He's worried that cars will start backing up here and it forces people to use...
I did not actually pick up the right paper. So currently, right now, there, that turn lane at that intersection is providing 290 feet. I think under the proposed plan, it will be lengthened.
I'm talking about build-out 2019.
Right. I have to, I have another piece of paper to give you an exact number.
We can do other questions while you do that.
And I'll come back.
Other questions?
I have a question about, oh, sorry, is there someone? About the private street, private road. Are the parking spaces, the total parking spaces, including the parking spaces on that private road?
Yes.
And is that private road built to town standards?
It's built to the Alston Town Center. Alston Town Center has its own road cross-section, so it's built to those standards.
So then, yes.
Yes.
So, yes. And so with that parking, is it, it looks in some places that there's parking on both sides of the street. Does that mean that only one car can go through?
No, it's wide enough to take two lanes of traffic and have parallel parking on both sides.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Just a question for clarification, or I guess from the applicant. The parking reduction is, you know, fairly significant. I believe you have enough spaces to park the residents. What do you foresee as far as guest parking, visitor parking, those kinds of things?
Again, our, our traffic, our parking analysis is that we, we, when we start a project, we make sure that we have one space per bedroom, and I think we're four spaces short of that here. As a functionality of it, the entire, if it's a, we also kind of planted it being 95% full, so there's always 5% of the bedrooms that are always turning over, if you will. And then there's also never, or we don't ever see where 100% of the, the project is occupied at the same time. People have different schedules, they're, they're coming and going at different times, and our experience has been that by providing one space per bedroom, which we essentially do here, that is providing enough for the residents, staff, and visitors.
One concern I had about that, and I wasn't really sure, the, the communities that you listed for us?
Yes, ma'am.
Where are they all located?
I believe if you go to that slide, one is in Greensboro, North Carolina, one, the Asheville Housing Project is in Asheville.
Yeah, that makes sense. Oh, and then Garner.
Garner is in, in Garner, it's off of Benson Road in Garner, and then the Chapel Hill one is on Martin Luther King Drive in Chapel Hill, and then Bridford Apartments are in Greensboro, North Carolina.
Okay. The only reason why I ask is because we're such a car-dependent community, and I don't know how that compares to the ones where these are. I would say it would be helpful to us, and I'll say, point this towards our staff again, in this situation, if you see that our, that the applicant's going to be presenting slides comparing communities that are outside of Cary, that you go and tell us, hey, the 10 communities that are nearby this project, their bedroom-to-parking ratio is this, and do they have problems or not? Because that would help us. That'd be a little bit more relevant to us than what's happening over in Greensboro.
And to, certainly, to somewhat follow up to Mr. Francis's question, it, it really has become our experience, or certainly my experience in managing the 14 complexes that we manage, that convenient parking is, is really almost more important than the actual number of spaces. You know, there's enough pavement out there to where if you don't provide enough spaces in location to the entrances and exits, people are going to find places to park rightly or wrongly in those spaces. And so what we've tried to do is twofold. Make sure we have one space per bedroom, and then to make sure that those spaces are convenient to the entrances and the exits, and I think we've accomplished that here.
And if I could just mention, I think, as you know, the burden is on the applicant to prove their case here on all of these modifications in the development plan, so puts staff in kind of an awkward position to try to go out and gather facts about places that they don't know and aren't familiar with, and really may not be qualified to testify about. So I'd say if you have further questions about something like that, you know, we should direct those to the applicant. If there's, if there's more information you really think you need before you make a decision, we can always continue and come back.
If, if staff cannot do that, then what staff needs to do is to tell the applicant, don't put it on us to figure this out, and say, we, you know, this doesn't, this is not relevant information to us. So it's really incumbent upon the staff to tell the applicant before this hearing, so that we're seeing the relevant information. It's, it's very difficult for us to look at information from Greensboro and decide whether or not that pertains. I love this, I love the parking reduction. I don't want it to be, I don't want, I want to qualify remarks, my remarks, by saying, I like the parking reduction, I like the green space that you're saving, I just want to make sure that I'm not doing a disservice to future residents and this be known as the community that doesn't have enough parking. So that, that's all, and that's, that's the concern, but we, you know, I understand what you're saying, that the staff can't be going out and doing that, and it may not be valid if they go out and say, well, this community has this parking ratio, and then they have to try to qualify whether or not there's a parking shortage there. I get that point, but we've got to have some more information than what we've been given here tonight.
And I think if you really don't have the information, then your option is to always deny the request.
Or, or table it.
Right.
Yeah. Mr. Meyer, we have reached the one hour.
Thank you. Other questions?
I just want to ask staff again, and clearly I'm kind of hung up on the safe crossing of fifty-five, because we have had, um, some unfortunate, um, activities occur on fifty-five. What is the plan? Because we have been suggesting in our Cary Community Plan and every, and everything that we've done, that we have more people live, work, and play close, close together. And there is right across the street, a grocery store. Right? So I definitely see the opportunity for people to want to walk right across the street. What is the plan for safe egress and ingress of people, of pedestrians across fifty-five? Mr. Hales made the comment about a, um, what, grades separated, as you were just talking earlier? Was there a plan at one point?
The Greenway's master plan shows that Greenway you see running north-south through that stream buffer is being grade-separated under O'Kelly Chapel Road. It goes up to a park farther north.
Oh, under O'Kelly Chapel, not fifty-five, okay.
Correct, not on fifty-five.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, so, so the, where's the, the, the underpass?
Where the little brown path is on the screen?
Yeah, right where the S is, under SP.
Oh, it would go right there?
It would go under, right there.
Uh, so it's not, there's no, where's the closest, uh, grade-separated crossing for fifty-five? It's way down south, near, near High House. Okay.
Sorry, Mr. Jensen, so what, what?
I'll try to, I'll try, I'll try to answer this. So, what we can do in the interim is, when, when they come in, they still have, again, they provide a proposal for us, so they've got, again, a full package of construction drawings they need to do. We would ensure, uh, working with DOT to make sure that, um, as part of this plan, where they're gonna take sidewalk all the way down to the intersection, that we want it connected to the shopping center, so putting a crosswalk with pedestrian signal heads would be the most ideal thing to do here, and, uh, you certainly can ask them to make that part of their proposal, is that they'll put a single pedestrian, uh, crosswalk, uh, to connect up with the developments across the street. I think that makes sense. And, uh, like I say, the future, you know, whatever, whenever we do a, some other project to do a, a grade separation of that, that's probably the most ultimate, but in this particular scenario, certainly if we get a, some commitment from them to work with DOT and us on making sure that we have that connectivity to commercial areas, that would be, that would be a win-win for everybody.
Yeah, that would make me very happy.
And I will say, we, we expected that. I mean, I, I expected that we would have to stripe that intersection and put in the, the proverbial push-button, uh, signs and the walk, don't walk stuff that Mr. Jensen talked about.
And is that a condition, is that a condition you're offering, or how do we ensure that that happens?
I would assume that that would be a condition of our approval of our construction plans.
Well, I, I would, I would say that, so we, we can all agree tonight, that's our vision, and that's what we want. I would, I would prefer if we could get that in as a, as an offering tonight, if we could.
By all means.
And that way, I, I think DOT will press it as well, but I think, you know, going into it, if we all agree, I think there's, there's little doubt of what, what our vision is supposed to be there.
Great, thank you.
And I have no problem, uh, doing that. We, we expected for that to happen, for, for us to have to do that. So that's not outside of our expectations.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Yerha, I know you've been waiting to
I'm sorry.
Ask your questions.
Well, yes, I guess. When I come into one of these quasi-judicial hearings and I see modifications, I just ask myself a simple question. Is the testimony that I'm hearing tonight, and of course, the staff report that we were provided with, does it convince me to approve those modifications? As far as the parking is concerned, what I've heard tonight, and especially the approvals that we've done recently, uh, where we've approved, um, parking reductions very similar to this, two previous situations, it convinces me that it's okay. So I'm okay with the parking piece of it. I'm not sure I'm convinced that, and as far as the ten-foot versus five-foot, I prefer the ten-foot, I guess like everybody else, but that's not a showstopper, one way or the other. But as far as the vehicular issues, when I read the report, and, and the report is very tedious and very confused, you're, you're right, Mrs. Wright, it wasn't just you, you know, when we're reading this at home, I stopped after the first one. I, I had, I couldn't read the second and the third, because I did, I had to wait for another day to, to start those, this was so complicated. But, I said, well, why is the applicant doing what they're, you know, what the town is asking to me is reasonable, and it's in our ordinance? Why are they deciding to do something that the town isn't requiring that's also reasonable? Why isn't the town requiring both, was one question that I guess comes to mind, uh, unless the town doesn't think that the one is needed at all, you know, the, the, the western increase of the second lane down there? But, what I hear tonight, and I'm trying to, I guess, distill what I'm, what I'm hearing, the main reason the applicant's chosen to do something else is really because it's a, it's, there's a time efficiency here that it looks like it could take forever to get Army Corps to perhaps approve what the town wants done. And, I, I don't know if you're, you're hearing that too. It seems like that's the main reason, it could take years perhaps to get done what the town wants done, versus being a lot easier to do what the applicant is requesting to have done. And I'm not sure that convinces me that it's the, the applicant's making the right choice. I don't know whether time efficiency is as much of a concern to me as widening the right intersection. So that's why I'm not thoroughly convinced that we're doing the right thing here. Parking, I'm good with, ten-foot, five-foot, I really, ten-foot's better, I don't particularly care, um, but I, I'm not convinced, and that's what I tried to distill this down, is what a hearing tonight convincing me to approve a modification? And in that, I, I'm still not convinced.
And if I may, uh, and I understand and, and appreciate your comment. It, it seemed to us, from a development standpoint, that we were, I don't think I'm gonna use this metaphor incorrectly, but it was a somewhat Faustian bargain. We were asked to, to, to build a third through lane, um, and we, we planned that out, went through that process, and were unable, through the, and, and through a long, lengthy process with the Corps and with town's, uh, staff's somewhat help and, and insistence and some bad information from the Corps or what have you, we were told that the third through lane was not permissible. And so, what we were further told by the Corps was that in order to have that third through lane permitted, the town, in conjunction with us and with the, I guess either the, the owner across the street and, and other parcels, would have to come up with a general plan for all of the improvements between fifty-five and Austin Avenue. And so, we, we had suggested, and, and we, and I don't want to kind of make this more complicated than it already is, very complicated, we, we didn't necessarily object to, uh, making the payment in lieu for the entire third lane. The problem that I see with that is twofold, really. Number one, obviously, i- is the cost involved, which is not something that's, it's not negligible or, or what have you, but the bottom line is, is that we didn't feel that those improvements would ever be made, that that third lane of, of traffic, I mean, that third through lane would never be built. Now, it may in fact be built at some point in time and become a second right-hand turned lane, but that was really after the fact brought up. So then, then we were forced with, well, do we want to make the payment in lieu and have what I would consider to be a, a, we would certainly make the payment, we, I would assume that we would get approval of, of that from this council, and what our site would look like would be an unfinished street in front of our property, until such time as the Corps permitting occurred, until such time as perhaps the other side of the street was developed. And so, rather than per, permit a project that would be somewhat incomplete for a fairly long period of time, why not go ahead and offer what we've offered? Complete the, I think it's the east side of O'Kelly Chapel from fifty-five to Austin Avenue, provide that two through lanes, which I think currently does it. We give you, if you will, all the easements that are necessary, uh, to, to construct the lane when it is in fact needed in the future, very similarly to what happened across the street. So, I, I understand and appreciate, uh, and, and not, that I'm not on your side as well in that. It seemed to us that the best course of action was to do the most we could now, rather than, to a certain degree, just to make a payment and then not have anything done at that intersection for what I think is the foreseeable future.
Other questions?
Can I try and boil this down a little simpler? Because there's a lot of information, and trying to write the staff report in an intelligible way was tricky. The town's requiring, the town's plan requires, build three lanes, so third through lane, sidewalk, curb and gutter. They're providing a sidewalk, curb and gutter. What it really boils down to is the amount of zero dollars
Right.
For the third through lane.
Right.
Does it advance the goals and purposes of the ordinance? And is that third lane not necessary, or not desirable, in the, the present time? So the, the other stuff is, is background clutter, they're doing what's required, um, so that's really what it boils down to, if that simplifies it a little bit, I think.
But, we're also getting the, on the, um, west side, instead of the one-receiving lane, we're getting the two-receiving lanes, correct?
You, you are. They are offering the two-hundred-and-eighty feet of additional
Correct.
Curb and gutter and sidewalk on the west.
That under current town requirements, they would not have to provide.
Correct, so...
So you would have two lanes, or go into one lane to three lanes, and instead, what they're proposing is a continuous two-lanes all the way through.
Correct, so in addition to what the town's required, the third through lane, you are getting the two-hundred-and-eighty feet of additional curb and gutter.
Correct.
Additional sidewalk.
Correct.
And additional median.
Correct. So while they're not paying for the third lane, they are paying for things that are not their responsibility.
That is correct.
What the equity is in that, I'm not a hundred percent sure on. However, I, when I look, I'm not a traffic engineer, didn't stay at a Holiday Inn Express, um, when I look at what's required versus what they're proposing, I like what's proposed better. I think it flows traffic better, I think it looks better, um, honestly feel like it advances the goals and principles of the ordinance. I think it, this is gonna be one of those crazy cutouts where you go, one lane, three lane, then across the street back to two lanes, and you know how much we struggle with those and hate those.
Yeah, I, I agree with you.
Yeah. So, I don't have a problem with what they're proposing. I act, I actually think we're getting a better product. The only thing I really have a concern of, for me, was the sidewalk. I, I'm confused that we still, I guess five-feet's okay, but I want ten-feet, so...
And we still, just to make sure, with this proposal, we still get the easement for the third lane?
Correct.
Should the town need to build it at, at some time? Because then it would be incumbent upon the town to build it.
Correct, all the right-of-way required by the planned roadway width map is being dedicated.
So then the question would be, is it two-hundred-and-eighty linear feet in curb and gutter, additional, kind of negate the, the build-out of the third lane? Right? Did I get that right?
We're, we're getting things that we don't require, and not getting things that we do require.
So maybe we're just requiring the wrong stuff.
Maybe.
Well, I mean...
I mean, maybe.
Is that what we're saying?
Well, no, because they're, they're
I don't like to think that.
They're offering to do, and to get the easements from a property that they don't currently own.
And I will say to that, to that degree, I, I did have a conversation with Carolyn McCullough, who is the principal of Highland Developers, who owns that piece of property between our property and the, uh, and Austin Avenue. And as you can imagine, I think this is a conversation, or it's a phone call that everybody wants to get.
I know.
I said, hello, Ms. Austin, I, I would like to improve your property for you. And she said that she thought that made a lot of sense.
Right, because eventually she'd have to do it anyway.
Again, again, you're correct, Ms. Bush. When she
That's right, it's hearsay.
When she comes to this council, if, if I don't get approved in two years, she's gonna have to put in that second lane, she's gonna have to put in the reclaimed waterline, she's gonna have to do the sidewalk in front of her space.
Right. We're not getting something for nothing, we're just getting it earlier, because eventually that land would be developed, and so for that short period of time where it goes from one lane to two lanes, right?
Yeah.
Whenever she comes in
Right.
I mean, we would eventually get that.
You would, you're right. But I really do think
But it might not be
If you drive from O'Kelly Chapel today, especially now that, I think it's Horton Elementary, I called it the new school, um, from Horton Elementary all the way to fifty-five, when we're done, will be a consistent curb and guttered sidewalk roadway. And in the alternative, uh, Mr. Yerha, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, what you would get is you would get money for some future development, or some future widening. And, and I'm, I'm, I certainly, and I said this to staff, and I want to say it tonight, we, we're not doing this a hundred percent out of the goodness of our heart. At the end of the day, I think it makes our product a great deal more, uh, presentable and finished and nice, um, so, you know, we'll have the Greenway right there, we'll have a pedestrian bridge over the creek, um, so I, I think it will, we have no problem, I have no problem offering up a condition of ten-foot sidewalk from fifty-five to Austin Avenue. The only problem that I may have there is Ms. McCullough, but, uh, again, I believe since, uh, it'll come to, the, the check will be written by me, I'm, I'm hoping I can convince her of that.
Other questions from that end? Mr. Smith, do you have any questions?
No, I'm just so glad I don't go out that way.
Mr. George.
Um, no, I, just to echo some of the, the points, uh, I was at a meeting with a group the other couple of days ago, and we were looking at the options, and the reality is, neither option was exciting, and that's a little bit how I feel here, you know, listening to your concerns, Ed, but, but in the end, it's our job to provide some balance, it's our job to, um, remain reasonable and not harm, uh, future residents having to pay for that, that road. Not jumping up and down, but I think, uh, a lot of these issues have merit, I agree with the, the length of the, uh, the Greenway or the sidewalk, and, um, you know, the parking, you know, the caution I have is I think we, as a staff, the staff has to start looking at, um, the, the formulas that we're using. I mean, the arguments that you, uh, the applicant gave about convenience, I agree. But I also see the models changing, where the whole, uh, logic of one bedroom is one car, um, I see demographics changing, I see, you know, I see our codes being challenged with how many are allowed in buildings, how many are there, and, um, we already have issues where that's, that's being challenged. And, um, I'm not excited at the fact that those other ones were, were down. I think our formula is getting, um, too generous on reducing the parking. At the same time, I, I, I listen to the, the convenience argument for this one, but I'm not feeling good about that argument, I just gotta tell you that. But, we've done it for three, I just think, uh, from a town perspective, a staff perspective, we really gotta watch the, the, um, results of those decisions, and we've really gotta look at, are our formulas, um, relevant in today's, today's world? That's my thought about parking.
Mr. George, Ms. Robinson, any additional questions?
I do. I, I had, um, it, it would be helpful to know, um, how a couple of things work. One is, I don't know the cost of that check you're writing to, to do that road, and how that would compare to the payment in lieu. And, I don't know that it's, uh, it helps when you ask for a zero payment in lieu, as, as Mr. France pointed out, they're paying something, it's just not cash to us, they're putting a road in, and that's worth an awful lot. That's worth cash to us, because there's some places that aren't we footing the bill for some of these connections, where the road was going three to two to one, and we're widening them. So that is real money, that we're, we're gaining sooner than later, so I, I think it's a problem out west, and, uh, but I don't know how to...
Well, the, the, basically the number that we came up with for the payment in lieu, not taking into account the escalator and some other numbers, was, as far as the real construction number, if we were to go out there and build it today, it'd be right around a million dollars, and what we're proposing is around seven-hundred-and-fifty to nine-hundred-thousand dollars, so, uh, and, and part of that has to do with this pedestrian bridge, and the, the simple, uh, the, the extra, uh, five feet of, of, right, of sidewalk, we're more than willing to do, what, what, providing that, it adds a little cost, probably forty or thirty, thirty or forty thousand dollars.
Okay, and then, um, maybe this question's for our Lisa or somebody, so in the future, when the, the land, you said Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
When, when her land is developed then, and it's already built out to town standards, if it's built to, will they be required to do anything improvements along that road if it's already improved, no matter who improved it?
Currently, the plan still calls for the, I believe, and you guys can correct me, but if there's anything else that's not done out here, if the third through lane is supposed to go all the way back to Austin Avenue, they're not proposing that, so a future development would have to come in and finish anything that's still required that they aren't doing at this point in time.
So at some future point, if she came forth, and we felt like we would take, we would take payment in lieu, that we could then use to make another right-hand turning we would take payment in lieu that we could then use to make another right-hand turning lane, because we've already got the right-of-way, we could shift her payment in lieu to fix what they didn't pay, and we've got a better project from beginning to end, soup to nuts.
Yes, sir.
But it wouldn't include the third lane down by their property? The completed third lane? Because we wouldn't have money from them to do that third lane.
Depends on the size of the payment in lieu. I don't know what size we're getting.
Well, no, payment in lieu is always associated with linear feet.
Linear feet. And we don't know what that would be, so.
But again, but again, there wouldn't be a third lane on the other side of the intersection for that third lane.
That's what I was asking for.
No, no, he meant on the west side.
No, no, that's, no, that's not what I meant, so yeah.
No, we've already, we've already received the payment in lieu for the Parkside Town Comment.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
So yeah, so you understand, so, so that, as I understood from Ms. Johnson, the currently, the two eastbound lanes, that one of them is striped. Can you show, on the left, on the east, the eastbound lane across Alston? As it comes, because it doesn't, the drawing doesn't show that.
Eastbound lane as it comes across Alston, so you're talking about coming from Green Level Church Road?
Mm-hmm. I just had a question mark here, because I.
So right now Evans Road widened their section to the CTP. Three lanes on their side, so that area right here in front of the townhomes, that MI Homes built, is three-lane section.
And it's currently striped for what? One left turn and two through lanes?
Currently two through lanes.
That, that only go into one lane.
That goes into one?
Yes, goes into one lane, correct.
Yeah, so, you know, there, there's so much going on out here, you know. Effectively going from, along the, the Evans Road townhomes, you're really going eastbound, you really only have one effective through lane.
Okay.
Okay? So if we could get the widening all the way with this development to Alston, we could, they could re-stripe that for two, two through lanes, really from Green Level all the way, all the way to 55. So that would be, you know, some benefit.
And, and was the plan to the west of Alston, is that a, that was a planned three lane?
Plan to the west of Alston is a four lane, meaning divided. But because of the, of the demand for right turns from O'Kelly to go south on Green Level, there is a dedicated, planned for a dedicated right turn lane there, so.
Okay, that helps. And I too, then, if, if he's offering, I mean, I, I would like for us to put in the, a.
Ten foot.
Pedestrian, pedestrian signal, a 10-foot. And then a pedestrian signal with a striped crosswalk on, across our, to get them across 55. Because that's.
And, and we'd be more than happy to do it. The only caveat I would say is, is, of course, I would assume DOT would go along with it, but I can't promise, I, I'll promise to build it if DOT will let me, how's that?
Ms. Johnson, could you come back? See if you have any additional information. If not, I'll ask your professional opinion.
I do. So the AM peak for the 2019 bill condition is the worst case, and that Q, based on our traffic simulation, is 719 feet. So the analysis shows that it's metered a little bit by the signal.
We're talking about right turn or a left turn? I'm talking about right turn.
The right. The right turn.
It's 750 feet. Help me, how many feet long is a car, Don?
716 feet of Q.
Some are short, some are long.
We assume a 25-foot length.
Per car.
From front bumper to the next front bumper.
25 feet per car.
Somebody do the math?
Yes, so it's about 30 cars.
30 cars. So that.
Is what I would.
That gives me pause, that now this site plan will create a cut-through from O'Kelly Chapel to NC 55. And, and just personally, you know, I would want some kind of traffic calming to prevent that. But, you know, that's, that's just a personal opinion, because I think it's gonna be an issue for your product.
By all means.
You have people pouring through there in the morning.
And, and I would offer, Mayor, but it would have to, of course, go through staff as to whether or not, you know, speed bumps are, are a concern. I will say that, and we would have no problem putting up a stop sign. You know, when, when, and, and the stop sign in the community really.
I was actually thinking more of traffic circles, but something more pleasant. But Mr. Hales, I don't know if, if, it's way late in the ballgame to, to talk about that, but.
Well, on-street parking, to some extent, acts as a traffic calming, because it narrows that. So it slows down speeds, but we'd be willing to entertain whatever they're willing to propose.
Can I follow up on that, Mr. Mayor? Because it's the same thing, is that if you're having a concern about the right turn lane, do we know the traffic difference, do our people know, are those two lanes going across, or did Ms. Johnson study, if we've got two through lanes going across eastbound across 55, are they currently necessary? And if they're not currently necessary, because there's not that many people going across, but more people are going south, I don't know how many people are going across. Have they studied, Ms. Johnson studied, how many people are going across versus how many people are turning right?
So the 2019 bill volumes show that 198 cars are gonna go across the intersection to the park side, towards the park side development versus 426 cars. That would be the PM, that was the 200 versus 426. In the AM, it's 157 versus 707. So it's two to three times more cars turning right than need to go across.
Well, why would we not stripe it and have two right turn lanes now?
I, you know, I.
I'm just saying why.
To interrupt you, but I really don't want to be designing.
Right.
Roads here at the table. That is a bad idea.
No, the question is in the, the traffic study.
Mr. Jensen.
Well, I think if, to your point is if, if, if the balance doesn't, if you don't need to, why do? Well, our hope and desire is in about six months, the, O'Kelly Chapel Road's gonna cross the railroad tracks and connect up all the way over to Davis Drive. So I, I do believe that the two lanes are gonna be needed.
That's right.
And the other project that dovetails this with Louis Stevens Drive connecting up with Little Drive, the continuity in this area is really gonna, gonna jump up differently, especially with all the, the new schools that we have, not only in Cary, but also in, in the Morrisville RTP areas. So it's a, I do believe it's, and, and again, I'm not sure if the, if the traffic study that they did showed a absolute full build-out of the Kite development. I mean, they, it may have only been a, a partial development of it. So I, I do believe that where we have it today is, is good.
Sorry, that helps.
Just say one last thing. Could you put the picture, Mr. Hale, back up of the roads? So it seems to me, since there's not that third lane, it drives the importance of having the alternative road to the south that would cut it through this community over to Alston. You see the little stub out there? So is that, yeah, is that stub going to be for a collector road? Is that kind of designed to be a collector road, or just kind of like a little tiny?
It's a, it's a local street that will connect through whatever develops to the southwest.
Okay, so it's not designed in our thoroughfare plan as being a collector road?
It is not identified on the planned roadway width map.
Should we go back and look at that? I mean, given the fact that we were not having the third lane here? And we're, and I think it was Ms. Bush who pointed out the, the difficulty without having a full access movement on O'Kelly. It seems like it would drive the need to have additional ways to get in and out of this community.
I would have to defer to Mr. Jensen or Mr. Dunn if they have any thoughts on whether or not the volumes would constitute a collector.
You know, it's, it's, it's a private street that they're building in their development. I, I, I think we believe that with the Alston plan, the connectivity of a lot of, a lot of streets, and instead of just one street trying to, trying to handle all the traffic, if you have a, a lot of streets went here connecting one another, then maybe, you know, one street wouldn't, wouldn't have the burden and have to be that big. So, you know, whatever transpires and develops to the west and south of this site over to Alston Avenue, I think we're gonna have to make sure that connectivity is a big part of that. Make sure we have plenty of smaller streets, so we don't have to have a lot of, you know, a single big street. So I think that's, that would be the concept. I think that the Alston plan is trying to achieve is a lot of grid-style streets and having a lot of ways in and out without having to overburden one area of it, so.
Okay.
Other questions? Are we ready to move to the motion phase?
Yes.
All right. So I'll close the public comment portion of the hearing and ask council for motion. Remember, we have four motions.
I'll start reading them.
The first is annexation, then we have the two modifications, and the last one's site plan.
Okay. All right, I move that we approve the request for annexation of the subject parcel.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Please continue.
Okay. For the reasons discussed, I move that we approve the modification request made by the applicant, as the request meets all the approval criteria of the applicable sections of the LDO. And this pertains to the request to reduce the parking requirement from 471 spaces to 330 spaces.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion.
I'll just say, I think we're, we're going out with some hope on this, that this is okay. I think in the future, we need to have better information, if not from our staff, from the applicant.
And I did see Mr. Overton taking a lot of notes, so I think we're gonna see some changes.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I think we need to, I mean, re-look at our standards, not so much.
I do, I think.
Put the burden on, you know, staff. I mean, applicants should come prepared to make their case, why? The staff shouldn't be doing it for them. But I do think, given the number of these that we're seeing, change in demographics, living habits, transportation, those things, maybe we need to take a look at that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion six to one. Continue, please.
Okay. For the reasons discussed, I move that we approve the request to make a payment in lieu of construction of $0 for a third through lane on O'Kelly Chapel Road. And then, do I put that?
Sidewalk.
Put the sidewalk in now and then?
Well, we have the conditions associated with the development plan. You can put the conditions on either one. The way I had it.
I'll do it, I'll do it later.
They have it in the other one.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and second. Everybody clear on that motion? We're just talking about the road improvements, what the applicant proposed.
And I have, just have a comment. I, I, I'm gonna support it. However, just from a comment perspective, I think the reason I'm supporting it is because we get a cleaner look earlier. We get this, especially with the school opening, especially with transportation issues there, because I think it's almost negligible. I mean, eventually, Mrs. McCullough would eventually have to improve that, and maybe we'll get payment in lieu from her for the extra width. But there is something to be said about completing the road earlier, especially for people in Western Cary who are already struggling with it. This is one of those, you know, 4951 ones, where getting it earlier, to me, makes more sense.
I agree with you.
And I echo this, Laurie's come.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
The response of the applicant to my question and the comments of my colleagues following that have marginally convinced me to support it. I guess it's all that matters to the applicant.
Actually, it probably doesn't even matter at all.
No, it does.
Probably, you're right, you're right.
Well, the outcome.
Other comments? All right, we have a motion.
Yeah, thanks for making me laugh, Ed, I needed that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous. Please continue.
Okay. For the reasons discussed, I move that we approve the proposed development plan with conditions as stated below, as it meets all of the approval criteria set forth in Section 3.9.2L of the LDO.
And Ms. Robinson, I hate to interrupt you, but you don't have to read all of these.
I was hoping you were gonna say that, again, it's good.
If you would just like to, so what I would propose is that what's in front of you, we would go back to the 10-foot street-side trail language, which was crossed out. We will put that back in. And then in item two, we will add in also a requirement for the striped crosswalk with pedestrian signals. And I'll make sure with my transportation folks, we've got the exact right wording for that. So when the written resolution comes back to you, you'll see that in there, in addition to three and four and number one, as they're written on the page.
Okay, so.
Concur with that motion.
I concur with that.
Second.
A second.
Second. Is that okay with you, Mr. Silverstein?
I, I think that the motion should reference that, that the language is taken from the suggested motions passed out this evening in connection with Hawthorne at Parkside, 15 SP 053.
I will amend my motion to reference that.
You okay with that, Don?
I'm sorry, I'm left.
Admon the motion.
Yeah.
All right. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous. If Silverstein, if everything's in order, then we'll close this public here. All right.
Thank you very much.
Public hearing is closed. Thank you. We now have a second public hearing. And if you're just joining us tonight, there are rules that we need to follow for this evidentiary hearing that I've read earlier. In this case tonight, before, the applicant has proposed to develop more than 100,000 square feet and requested a modification to the town's development standards. And as a reminder to those that are attending tonight and council chambers, this is an evidentiary hearing more like a court case. Council acts like a judge and can only accept evidence from competent material and substantial witness, from expert witnesses. North Carolina United States Constitution gives the applicant certain due process rights in an evidentiary hearing. And as I've said earlier tonight at the first hearing, an evidentiary hearing's more like a court case. Council acts like a judge and can only accept evidence from experts. Constitution really ties our hands on what evidence we can accept. And we apologize in advance for what might seem to be burdensome, complex, or a complex process. To those that are with us this evening who wish to testify that are not experts, we can only accept information from you that is factual and what you have observed, not your opinion. Our attorney, who is sitting to my left, will help us determine who's an expert and what evidence we can consider. Hearing procedures and detailed rules are on the printed agenda. All speakers wishing to speak during this public hearing must be administered an oath by Mrs. Johnson, who is to my right, and will pause at this time to let those of us take place.
Oh, look at this. Should've gotten chocolate. Can I give him one of Ken's? Oh, nice throw.
Okay, at this time, I'll ask council members if they've had any site visits, expertise, communications, financial relationships, specialized knowledge, or close relationship to an affected person to disclose, starting to my right, Mr. George.
I have not.
Ms. Robinson.
I have not.
Mr. Smith.
I haven't.
Ms. Bush.
I have not.
Mr. Yerha. And when Mr. France comes back, we'll ask him. Based on the evidence you've heard, if there's anyone who objects to a council member's participation in this hearing, please come forward and identify your objection. Seeing no one, we're going to, do I have to wait for Mr. France?
Well, if, if he's not here when the evidence starts, he shouldn't participate.
Okay.
Because he wouldn't have heard all the evidence.
So hold on just a second.
Play a little music, Kelly.
Do you want me to have them turn on the music?
Something other than the Jeopardy I was humming.
Besides what?
The Jeopardy song jingle I was humming. I used to do that at football games, at the, the announcer. The judges, the referees would get together, I was on the microphone. I would do the Jeopardy jingle, waiting for them.
Cute. Very cute.
You got an odd number, you thought you could proceed. You like that?
Yeah. You didn't like it?
I liked the other one.
Now we leave Laurie. But while we're waiting on Laurie.
I'll go find Laurie.
Mr. France, you have any expertise, communications, close relationships to an affected person, or specialized knowledge to disclose?
No.
All right. Soon as Ms. Bush comes back, we're sending a staff member out.
You're done.
Then we'll get started. Oh, she's back? Okay. I'll once again ask anybody have an objection to a council member's participation. Please come forward at this time. Seeing none, we'll continue and open the quasi-judicial public hearing. Mr. Loveland will introduce this hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. This is a request by Spectrum Properties for consideration of a site plan for an office building that is exceeding 100,000 square feet, therefore requiring council approval. In this case, the office building is 159,500 square feet. The applicant is also considering a modification request for a non-standard connection to a adjacent public greenway. And we'll explain that more as we get into the request. It's a 17-acre site that's located north of Eterly Drive, south of Symphony Lake. You can see the residential properties to the west. Of course, there's an existing office building on the eastern half in RW one. RW three also permitted a standalone parking lot. That parking lot or development plan for that parking lot has been submitted and approved, but it has not been constructed yet, as you'll see in just a moment. The site is still wooded, it is still vacant, it is undeveloped. It's a well-wooded lot, although there were no champion trees on the property. This is the applicant's submitted plan, site plan. Of course, the primary note is the one hundred fifty-nine thousand five hundred square foot office building in the northern end of the property. It is a five-story building on the front. South side is a six-story building on the north side due to the slope of the property towards the lake. Note that they are proposing to extend Regency Wood Place. That's gonna give access to the building and access to their parking. It also helps the building meet the requirement, town requirement for a building to front on the street. There is a BNP west of the building. In this case, it is a wet detention pond. The buffers you'll see there on the west of the BNP, the one hundred foot riparian buffer, that's fifty feet on either side of that stream channel. There's also a one hundred foot buffer on the northern property line just south of the lake. And then per the PDD requirements, there's a forty-foot type A buffer along the western property line. Also want to point out that you'll see, included in this plan is the private, the parking lot that was previously approved. I should say it's shown on the plan sheet, but it's really not part of this development proposal that's for you today, so you really should kind of block out that parking. It is, of course, designed, as you can see, to fully integrate into the property once this develops, but it is not, again, not part of that proposal. The architectural requirements of the community appearance manual do not apply to this building since it's located in an exempt office park. The CAM exempts certain office parks, Regency is one of them, from the CAM standards. So while they submitted architectural drawings in the site plan, they were, they were not up for review, so I will not include them in. They are requesting a modification request. The LDO requires that they connect to the adjacent greenway. You can see the existing public greenway just off their site that's on the Symphony Lake shoreline. So the LDO requires that they provide a paved trail that meets certain town slope requirements. They are proposing to provide a connection, but it is only paid for a portion, and it is not paid for the remainder, and it is not meeting town slope requirements. And this is a closer look of what the applicant is proposing. You can see the building in the bottom right-hand corner of the slide. So there is a concrete walkway from the building and around that wet detention pond that will connect in to a mulch trail. That mulch trail actually has some steps or some, some logs in there that'll help with erosion and act as, as step downs. And then that feeds into an earthen trail you see there on the left. That is an existing earthen path that they are tying into, and then that connects to the existing greenway. So that concludes staff's initial presentation. Once the other speakers have concluded their presentation, we'll return to present our observation and answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Loveland. At this time, I'll call on the applicant's attorney to present arguments and evidence in support of the application by addressing the applicable approval criteria.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Jason Barron with Morningstar Law Group here on behalf of the applicant. In addition to representatives of Spectrum here here with me tonight, the witnesses you'll hear from are Mr. Ryan Fisher of Witherspoon Ravenel, they're the engineering firm of record who have prepared the plans that are in front of you, and also Mr. Travis Fluid of Kimley Horn and Associates who has prepared the traffic study, and you'll hear from him shortly. I believe the evidence you'll hear tonight is that, in addition to satisfying the, the six requirements of the ordinance for approval of a site plan, the evidence that is before you tonight also satisfies the requirement for grant of the modification associated with the greenway connection. And I want to talk about that briefly, and you'll hear testimony from Mr. Fisher that will corroborate this. Essentially, as noted in the staff report, there is forty-three feet of, of grade difference between the bottom of the building here and where, and where the greenway is. And if you've been over there, if you've walked over there, if you, if you've run over there, it is a, it's a steep slope. And so in order to make that connection and satisfy the ordinance requirements for doing so, as is noted in the staff report, it requires significant switchbacks and, and significant tree clearing that will, we believe, will negatively impact the, the visual appeal of that area. A lot of the existing healthy vegetation that is on the site will have to be removed in order to accommodate that request. We believe the proposal that before you, that is before you tonight, in addition to satisfying the requirements, and it results in, you know, less visual impact, it preserves natural resources better, it relieves a burden associated with, you know, with developing the site, it, it's a better plan. It, it will provide a, a mulch path and a gravel path that will connect to the existing earthen path. And it's important to note that we are constructing sidewalks on the side of the, the driveway, aside, the side of Regency Woods, that will take pedestrians who want to access the trail via an ADA compliant connection, they can head out to Eterly Drive and just a little bit further down the road, I think it's maybe nineteen hundred feet, is, is the connection to the greenway. So there is a connection to the greenway, it's just not as close as we could connect directly behind the building. Again, we believe that this is a better plan for the site. My client believes that preserving the existing vegetation is far preferable to mowing the buffer down in order to accommodate that, that connection. And so with that, I'm gonna hand it off to our witnesses and who will testify as to the requirements, the ordinance. Thank you.
Good evening, Ryan Fisher with Witherspoon Ravenel, professional engineer in the state of North Carolina. Worked on the site plan closely with town staff, have gotten through almost all of the comments, aside from the greenway modification we're requesting tonight. We asked for three administrative modifications. The connectivity to the, the west, where the, the Regency Estates are, vehicular connection, we applied for modification on that, as well as to the north with Symphony Lake being there. Can't really do that. To the west, there's no road stub to this property, so we applied for that modification as well. There's also a five-point-one percent parking increase from required, that we have been granted five-hundred-and-fifty-nine spaces for this property. That's excluding the, the parking lot that is set aside that Doug pointed out. Also, one other modification, the hardscape in, for the stormwater wet pond. To be able to install that with, on this topographically very difficult site, we had to install, or proposed to install retaining walls. So that was one of the modifications that we asked for. As far as addressing approval criteria, protections of adjacent properties, the western side is buffered by the PDD, the forty-foot PDD buffer, and the News River buffer of the stream that goes north-south. The, the eastern side is an existing office building that is occupied, so it kind of, they merge together and work as one for the whole entire site. The, and then the northern portion is Symphony Lake, which we are trying to preserve that buffer between Symphony Lake and the office building. As far as the PD, Regency Park PDD, we are in line with that document and meet the, the requirements of it. It's designated an O and I site, which we are, and kind of check that box in the harmony of this site in regards to that PDD document. As Jason pointed out, the, the sidewalks connections, we actually have a north-south, also sidewalk through the parking lot to prevent any pedestrians from crossing traffic, to get out to Regency Woods Place as well, to prevent any conflict from that, from any vehicular movements. And at the same time, emergency services can get in and out with the proposed cul-de-sac in front of the building to access, you know, along Regency Woods Place. The, as Jason was discussing, the, the greenway modification is the, is the issue that we are asking for to be, to be allowed. The grade separation between the lake, we call it the lake level of the building, is that lower level has a terrace on it that is forty-three feet in difference. To make a code-compliant walkway to the existing greenway would require the switchbacks, would require a massive amount of grading operations that would clear. There's also, on the northern side, there's a News River buffer that borders Symphony Lake. There's also the Town of Carey's Urban Transition Buffer. So you have, you know, a hundred feet there that would need to be cleared, as well as the north-south News River Buffer, to install the switchbacks and the grading associated with that. So that is the, the reason, you know, we, we believe that it is better for the, the appearance of the, the site and to preserve that vegetation in lieu of constructing a code-compliant walkway. Really, I mean, that's about it. And just to conclude, you know, that's our plan, that's what we are requesting. I can answer any questions that you may have, but.
Could you tell us what a switchback is?
A switchback is, what it does is it lengthens the trail to account for the grade change along the trail. So the longer you make the trail, you can make up more grade. But in, with that, you have to grade more to do that.
Thank you.
Good evening, Travis Fluid, senior transportation engineer with Kimley Horn and Associates. I am the traffic engineer for this project. I have a master's degree in transportation engineering, and I'm a registered engineer in the state of North Carolina with over thirteen years of experience performing traffic impact analyses and traffic capacity analyses. As I said, I'm the traffic engineer for this project and here discuss the traffic impacts, and I oversaw the traffic analysis for this project. We were retained as part of the development of the site plan to evaluate the traffic impacts associated with the project, and generally speaking, traffic to and from the existing site is handled fairly well. The major intersections in the vicinity of the site are expected to operate at acceptable levels of service at project build-out. There are no capacity issues or unsafe traffic patterns at the site today, and none are anticipated at site build-out. Having reviewed the proposed site plan, the only traffic improvements we recommended were separate left and right turn lanes on Regency Woods exiting the site to facilitate movement vehicles exiting the site onto Eterly Drive, and these improvements are shown on the site plan. Therefore, it is my professional opinion that the proposed plan before you today provides mitigation for traffic congestion impacts reasonably expected to be generated by the project, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, I actually have two questions for my first witness. Mr. Fisher, in your professional opinion, does the modification with respect to the greenway advance the goals and purposes of the LDO and result in less visual impact and more effective environmental preservation?
Yes, it does.
And, Mr. Fisher, in your professional opinion, with the approval of that modification, does the plan satisfy the requirements for site plan approval in the Town of Carey?
Yes.
Thank you. Nothing further.
Okay. This time, we'll invite speakers who've been sworn in who wish to speak in support of the application to come to the podium one at a time, inviting the first speaker forward. Seeing no one, we'll continue. We now open the hearing up to those who are opposed to the requests. As a reminder to those who are testifying, please limit your testimony to facts that you know, and applicant's representative has the right to object to your testimony. He may object while you're speaking, they have the right to do that. Our contractual attorney sitting beside me will help council determine what evidence we may consider. This time, I would invite those in opposition to approach the podium, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone in opposition? Seeing no one, we'll continue, and once again, call on Mr. Loveland to provide professional observations about the requests.
Thank you. So once again, as you're aware, this requires council approval due to the size over a hundred thousand square feet and the modification request. Regency Park PDD does permit office uses, so this is a permitted use. The plan is consistent with the LDO requirements, with the exception of the modifications. As Mr. Fisher indicated, there are the modifications granted by staff. I think he hit on those. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to go into more detail about that. So that leaves the council action required on the remaining modification. The request is to provide the non-standard pedestrian connection. Of course, the requirement is to provide a paved connection, meeting town slope requirements. We'll know that there is a, or the closest connection point to the greenway is on Eterly Drive, is about nine hundred feet as the crow flies, but it'd be about a two-thousand-foot walk as you're walking from the proposed office building south on Regency Woods Place and back up Eterly Drive. And that's unfortunate, given the proximity of the proposed building to the greenway, that a pedestrian would have to walk two thousand feet. The problem, as Mr. Fisher and Mr. Barron have explained, is that the building, even the lowest level of the building is forty feet, roughly forty-three feet above the lake elevation or the greenway elevation, despite being that close. That, of course, means there's a very steep slope. And to put a trail meeting even the town slope requirements on that steep of a slope, as they've indicated, would result in the switchbacks, which are gonna unfortunately result, or would result, in clearing of the vegetation. How the town obviously puts an emphasis on preserving vegetation and is probably of particular importance, given the wooded tree line on Symphony Lake, which we acknowledge we would like to preserve, put even greater emphasis on preserving. So there is a conflict there. We'd like to have a connection, but we'd like to preserve trees as well. We'd like to note that the mulch and dirt trail that the applicant is proposing, we do not think that will weather well over time, particularly given the steep slope. You can see weather really washing away the, the mulch, and we fear that that would not be a well-maintained trail. We offer that a paved trail would certainly be much more durable and would receive more use, even if it had to include stairs. So we're suggesting consideration of a condition to require that that trail be paved, even though it would not be held to town slope standards. So that may allow them to use stairs, that would very likely be necessary. But the pavement would, would just result in a more usable and certainly a more well-defined trail that would be more maintained over time. And with that, I will conclude my presentation and be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Barron, do you have cross-examination of Mr. Loveland?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. It's either party believe there's evidence been presented to continue this hearing. All right. We're gonna begin the deliberative phase of the hearing and open it up to council members for questions or comments.
I guess the question for the applicant, Mr. Loveland just did a pretty good job explaining that a paved trail might be better than mulch and gravel. Can you speak to that?
Yes, Mr. France. From a liability standpoint, I have concerns as an attorney on behalf of my client, the, the, it's not clear, based upon the Americans with Disabilities Act, where liability would fall in a case like this. If you don't provide something, you're, you're clear of any potential liability. The moment you do provide something, there is an argument to be made that has to be handicap accessible. And so if we were to provide a sidewalk and not make it ADA compliant, I have concerns on behalf of my client that they could expose themselves to potential claims under the ADA for not providing an ADA accessible access from the building to the greenway. And so with respect to the, to the maintenance, I mean, this is, if it's any consolation to the council, this is a Class A office and a, a very- in a more usable and certainly a more well-defined trail that would be, um, more maintained over time. And with that, I'll, um, conclude my presentation and be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Barron, do you have cross-examination of Mr. Loveland?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. It's either party believe there's evidence been presented to continue this hearing. All right. We're gonna begin the deliberative phase of the hearing and open it up to council members for questions or comments.
I guess the question for the applicant, um, Mr. Loveland just did a pretty good job explaining that a paved trail might be better than mulch and gravel. Can you speak to that?
Uh, yes, Mr. France, from a liability standpoint, uh, I have concerns as an attorney on behalf of my client, the, the, it's not clear, based upon the Americans with Disabilities Act, where liability would fall in a case like this. If you don't provide something, you're, you're clear of any potential liability. The moment you do provide something, there is an argument to be made that has to be handicap accessible. Uh, and so, if we were to provide a sidewalk and not make it ADA compliant, I have concerns on behalf of my client that they could expose themselves to potential claims under the ADA for not providing an ADA accessible, um, access from the building to the greenway. Uh, and so, with respect to the, to the maintenance, I mean, this is, i-if it's any consolation to the council, uh, this is a, a Class A office in a very good location, uh, the tenants, if, the, the moment my client provides a, a walking path on behalf of its tenants, it's, I think it's going to be expected to provide it in a way that it's, it's, it's tenants can use. I mean, I think that there's a, there's a built-in check to that, if they're not gonna build the building and then walk off, they're gonna continue to operate a high-functioning, very nice Class A office building. So I think there's a, a built-in check to concerns associated with it eroding.
Is there a way to, uh, uh, condition that or to put some assurance rather than just trust me?
I mean, I, I think we can install and maintain, I, I think that my client would be fine with that.
Can you speak to where the dirt section of that is and, and how dirt and Class A office space go together?
Well, the, from the, the right side of the screen, um, this east side, is concrete, and then it changes from mulch, uh, earthen trail, where, in, in red, to, uh, the existing earthen trail that actually connects to the, uh, existing greenway.
And when we say...
I use color, Mr. George. Brown for dirt.
Awesome.
So when you talk about this earthen trail, is that on the, the property, your property? Or is that on someone else's?
See the property line?
It is.
The bold dash line, so the majority of it is on the property line. Obviously, it's connecting to a greenway trail that's off-site, so stands a little off-site. This is all onsite.
So would they maintain, I guess my question is, would they maintain the earthen trail, the mulch trail, all, all components of that?
Yes, we're fine with doing that. And, and if, if the council's inclined, I mean, again, it's, it, it's a conveni-, it's an existing trail, my client has walked the trail, you know, when they were looking at the possibility of finally developing the site, um, they feel good about the, the, the status of that trail in terms of their tenants accessing it, but if, if it's the will of the council to have a continuous mulch trail, I think that's something we can commit to and we'll ma-, you know, we'll install and maintain mulch on that portion of the trail as well.
Ms. Glover, I, I was gonna ask you, and it looks like you're ready to speak to these proposed conditions, if they're enforceable?
Well, I think staff could have a hard time enforcing the condition about maintaining the trail, obviously installing it, they'll look at when the building is being built, but maintaining it in perpetuity in the future and staff, you know, zoning compliance officers, staff going out there enforcing that condition could be burdensome and, and hard for staff to do, so I'm a little concerned about enforcement of that piece.
But isn't that true for landscaping as well?
Yeah, I mean, this, I mean, the, the reality is, you, you can't, uh, go across town looking for problems, but if, if, if a citizen brings up the issue and you have compliance, then you have to be in compliance, I mean, I don't, I don't see the hardship to staff.
I, I guess, and I'm not, I'm, I don't wanna be an attorney, it boils down to the definition of...
Of maintain.
Yeah, what is maintain?
Right.
I, I mean, thinking, I agree with Ms. Glover, that's likely to be a complaint-driven enforcement, that if we don't receive complaints, it's gonna be tough to enforce that, if we do receive a complaint, then we could potentially enforce it.
Then you have the condition and you have the ability to go back and deal with it.
And then the issue is, what does it mean to maintain, you know?
A mulch trail.
If there was some standard, and I have no idea, but if there was some standard about two-inch thickness of mulch or something like that, then it'd be something we can measure and say, yeah, there's two inches of mulch out there, or no, there's not. Um, so it just could lead to, you know, questions and confusion in the future if we go to enforce the condition.
I tend to agree with Mr. Barron that a Class A office space in this location overlooking Symphony Lake is probably gonna take pretty good care of the trail.
Yeah, my, my concerning and question would be, so I happen to have a, a vendor that is on the other side of Symphony Lake, and on a beautiful day, it is packed, and with the Class A office space over by Global Knowledge School dude, all that, it's packed. People are walking, whether they're walking with tennis shoes, high heels, right, you know, whatever, and walking through dirt and mulch to Class A office space doesn't seem appropriate to me. Um, I would rather see something that is paved all the way, I think that is what people expect. I wouldn't expect people to come in with, you know, mud and red clay on their shoes into the space, and as people walk by, it, it's just a well-used walking trail, and giving a, you know, an, uh, exception to that, um, and making it from mulch to dirt, or even if it's all mulch, when our standard has been paved, um, you know, I, I, I'm not looking for the switchback, I'm looking for, you know, allowing them, if they want to, to pave it.
And put stairs if they need.
And put stairs. I mean, 'cause if you are ADA compliant, then either way, if you're in a wheelchair, you can't go wheelchair on mulch.
Yeah.
So you'd have to go the, you know, four tenths of a mile around. So if you, you know, I hate to say that, but that is a safe egress for somebody in a wheelchair to, to go that way. At least, let's make it, you know, nice, in keeping with the rest of the area, that's just my personal opinion.
I agree.
Other comments?
I, I disagree, I mean, the last thing I want are stairs. I, I'd much rather have, uh, the, the, the slope and the thing. The, the other problem is, uh, just wood in general, rots fast, warps, I mean, we have this beautiful Swift Creek Greenway, you, you go on that a lot too. You look at the bridge, I mean, it's like, brand new, warped, pulling up, nails are coming out, and those are those super ones that are not supposed to come up. It's just more maintenance. I would rather have a, a safe pathway that I don't have to worry about slipping on stairs, worry about railings, wooden railings that fail. I, I mean, it's, it's not ideal, either, either way, it's not...
You want the switchback and take down?
No, I don't, because I think, then, then you're denuding the area.
He wants it drawn as it is.
I want it drawn as it is, I think it's...
But I don't think, may I ask a question? Would the stairs that you're envisioning, would they be wood stairs or would they be concrete, poured concrete stairs?
We're requesting consideration of a paved trail, so I think that would extend to, to the stairs as well.
No, 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 if we, oh, so we pave it, yes, pave with stairs.
Something equivalent to a paved, so, hard surface stairs.
This reminds me of Green Hope Elementary School, do you know what I'm talking about? So they had this, um, s- fairly steep slope, and then they had this switchback that went this way, and they never paved the steve slope, steep slope, because they wanted to be ADA compliant, so everybody could walk this way, and all the kids trounced down the hill and up the hill until they had this like mud pit, and then the school came in and put in concrete stairs with a metal handrail, and that's what everybody uses, except, unless you're on your bike.
Called user design.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean, I would, I, I'm in favor of the concrete stairs and concrete paving. I agree with you, and I, if I'm working at this office site, I'm not wearing blue jeans or shorts, I'm, I'm wearing nicer clothes, and I still wanna get out and walk the trail during the middle of the day. I go walk on a trail that's rained that previous day or that night, trash your clothes.
But what about the issues that was brought up about ADA compliant and liability?
I, I believe that, that what they're showing as an alternative satisfies the ADA compliance.
Other comments? Questions? Ready to move to the motion phase?
We, we've got one, we've got the, the attorney, uh, one attorney saying that that's worried about suit for that, and we have another attorney, we have, I don't know what, I don't know, we, we're dueling attorneys, is this a problem for the town, does the town maintain places that are concrete steps? Like going down to, from the parking lot at Herb Young, there are steps to go down, or you can wheel around the parking lot, so I'm just wondering, has the town run into a problem with this, being ADA compliant?
Uh, there are different standards for buildings, depending on when things were built, so things that were built well in the past, essentially kinda be grandfathered in. I have not done, and this issue was just raised for me immediately before this case started tonight, so not even prior to six-thirty, but at, you know, eight-thirty. Um, so I have not done any research, I have no opinion on Mr. Barron's opinion about their liability, I just, I have not looked into that, I cannot say.
And I wanna speak to the town's, uh, plan and town issues that we may have, we have an ADA transition plan, so annually, we, uh, make improvements to issues that we have in town facilities and such.
And that keeps us in compliance?
Correct.
Because we're always changing and updating?
We are working on that plan.
So that I understand where, where we are, so there's, and I don't wanna try to gauge, but let's just say then, there's really three options, there's the approval of the modification request to do this mulch dirt thing, there was the offer by the, maybe four, they're offered by the applicant to make it all mulch, right, to, uh, which is what I think I heard Mr. Barron say, well, we could change the dirt to mulch. Then there's the option that was specified in the staff report, which is, um, a modification not requiring ADA compliance, but allowing the applicant to offer to pave it, but it wouldn't meet ADA requirements, or there's, don't approve anything and they have to do the, um, switchback. Did I get all four of those right, or is there...
Can I suggest a fifth option?
Yeah, always.
Again, we're concerned about liability from an ADA standpoint. Uh, i-if, if we, I think we're fine with, um, paving the trail, it's not a money thing associated with it. If the town would accept essentially dedication of that portion of the trail that was going to be mulch, will dedicate it to the town and have it treated as part of the town's greenway, essentially an extension of the greenway, if the town is willing to ex-, if the town doesn't believe it's a problem from an ADA compliance standpoint, we're happy to let you guys assume that responsibility.
I would not recommend that we agree to that tonight without...
I don't even know what to say.
Um, Mr. McCraney's not here, I see Ms. Bailey is kinda shaking her head, and I'm not sure if Mr. Jensen has any thoughts on that, but we as a staff had not contemplated that, and we would have to, we would wanna discuss that and provide you with a recommendation.
So let me ask you a question. So what if council's sitting at this table said, hey, we want it paved, we want them to do it, and you come back later and say, you know what, we could have, uh, taken on that responsibility, how would that change? They would have to go through this process again?
Uh, what I'm saying is, if you want us to investigate that, maybe you table this for tonight, so staff can look into it, discuss, I mean, I think at this point, staff's recommendation on the fly would be, you know, we, we would not recommend that, um, at this time. Uh, you know, we could take some time and look into it, talk with the manager's office, talk with the relevant department directors, and see what people's thoughts are on that, and come back to you, but that would, that would mean a delay, and, you know, tabling this till your next, um, quasi-judicial meeting, which actually may not be until October.
I know.
Don't you have a meeting a week?
Well, we have a meeting next week, I don't know that that's, uh, really enough time to, to get all the parties together, considering it's summer vacation season around here.
Yes.
Can I ask you, but is there a sixth option? Perhaps, so, you're, you're tying into one place that's an existing path, and if I, if I calculated right, if you're a forty-three-foot drop, and you, is it a five percent grade? What's the ADA, is, do I, do we have someone who...
Five without handrails.
How much with handrails?
Eight, eight point three-three.
So we've either got to get eight hundred and sixty feet of trail, or we've got to get five hundred and twenty-some feet of trail, depending on whether you do rails or not.
Correct.
Um, so, but you own the land all the way around the BMP, all the way around to the far edge, I'm just, I just don't know what, what you've explored, if you just explored going here and considered switchbacks, or if you considered a parallel trail that just gently went down a slope all the way around the BMP and somewhere where you get, I didn't know if you, what you explored, is what I'm asking.
We've, we've looked at a lot of options, and all of them incorporate switchbacks, and having the buffer, uh, along the lake and the, the Neuse River buffer running up and down, or north-south there, uh, made it very problematic to retain vegetation.
And you don't have an option to go the other way, behind the other building?
Uh, no, it's the same, same type of issue.
Other questions or concerns or comments? Are we ready to move to...
I have a question for the applicant, if, if we were to table this till October, what is, I mean, just throw it out there, what does that do to your planning?
We would, uh, we're not inclined to have a table, it's, we're under kind of a tight deadline for delivery with a particular user, um, and so our preference would be to get an action tonight. I mean, I think my client would be happy to maybe pay a fee in lieu for the paved trail, and then the condition can contemplate, if the town is willing to accept the dedication, we would dedicate at some point in the future, I just, again, it's, it's just, the, the concerns associated with the ADA are, are, are sufficient that I'm concerned that it will incur unintended consequences from, from a liability standpoint by providing the stairs.
Why do we not, does the ADA not gonna complain about a, uh, or, about a dirt, previous dirt, or a mulch trail that doesn't incur the same liability?
Well, I think the issue becomes, as I understand it, at the moment, it becomes a condition of the plan approval, that the condition requires you to pave, that it, it creates greater scrutiny associated with it. And again, I'm not suggesting that it's dispositive from a liability standpoint, um, but, but when you create it, that's when you bec-, you, you run into issues.
So what if we don't, do we have a sixth op-, or seventh option of not requiring connectivity?
If you, if you deny the modification, they'll be required to connect, meeting town slope standards, which would require switchbacks and some vegetation laws.
But we could waive, we could waive the connectivity requirement, and then they don't have to do anything.
Or if you grant the modification, then the plan shows a, a mulch and earthen trail, so they provide that.
So ADA only kicks in if it's paved? Like, we have lots of greenways that are, are mulched, are those not ADA compliant?
Um, so, our discussion, um, as far, while the plan was going through review, is that our, our greenways are not, uh, subject to ADA, federal ADA standards, except our handicap ramps in the transition plan that Russ alluded to. Um, they did assess our greenway ramps, but not the trails themselves, because they are not yet, um, subject to those ordinances, is the, our understanding from our consultant. So when we looked at this, it was viewed as a private trail connection, um, and subject to the town's published slope standards, um, and discussing that with one of the, uh, building code inspectors and inspections and permitance department, that was, uh, the view that was expressed as well. Um, we have not discussed that in terms of a five-foot concrete with stairs, and whether that would change that classification for any reason. Typically, we've considered a trail as a six-foot wide trail, and it can be, we do have concrete trails and asphalt trails, but that's kind of where, um, it stands for now.
So I'm thinking of this more as a connection and less as a greenway trail, and that's where ADA comes in, and I think that's the concern that Mr. Barron has, and you were just speaking, I wanna repeat what I think I heard, when you're talking about ramps to something, that's has to be ADA compliant. When you're away from that, so far, there's not legislation or law that requires you to do anything.
Yes, and I, I wanna clarify, when I said ramps, I meant the handicap ramps, literally at the curb, not the ramp as in a ramp on the trail, some, that term can go across lines.
So, so I think, and I'm gonna make a weak attempt at trying to summarize this, I think the question we have is on the connection, which ADA compliance comes into play, and if you make it hard surfaces, then in the opinion of one attorney, that that could create a liability issue, and if you don't, um, then that creates a maintenance issue which we can enforce, so that's...
Which I think is really interesting, 'cause I've found that wet mulch is a lot slippier, more slippery than, and wet dirt is, seems just as much as a liability, but I'm not a lawyer and haven't gone to a Holiday Inn Express, so...
So, that's where we are, do we wanna move to...
Well, I just had one more question, I'm sorry. I mean, I'm still, um, this whole thought of it not connecting, it, it goes against almost, you know, everything that we try to do, but is there, is there some method to the madness where it buys us time to do it smarter, rather than trying to fix it on the fly right here? That's all, all I'm asking. I mean, if there's a way that, uh, by not making the requirement now, and I, I don't know how to phrase this, but does it buy us time where we can, um, come to a meeting of minds on that?
So, so I'll, I'll try to ask that question a different way to...
Thank you.
Mr. Barron, um, you're adding the mulch trail to connect to an earthen trail, is the earthen trail considered a connection?
Dirt.
And if it's not, then couldn't you pave what would have been the mulch trail and leave everything else as it is? That would be an option, or does that still create, uh, ADA issues?
Paving what portion of it, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm...
So, right now, the proposal has, um, mulch connecting to earthen trail.
Okay.
And if the mulch were, uh, hard surface, and you don't, uh, do anything else, that's still the same issue?
Okay.
For you, I'm asking.
Yes, yeah, no... Yes, yeah, uh, no, but I, I want to, I want to be clear. It, I feel better about my client's case to defend if we're not providing a continuous pave connection.
That's where I was going.
From the greenway to essentially where the mulch would start.
Right, so, I, so what I.
If we're paving just the red portion, I guess.
Yeah, so I'm getting to what Jack said. If the earthen trail were left as it is, and the rest of it was hard surface, then that would be the option that Jack is talking about. And you're thinking that that might not be as big a risk.
Yeah, we would be more comfortable with that.
So that's, that's what.
So you would go, I, I'm not sure I understand, so you would make the mulch?
Hard surface.
Hard surface, and you would leave the dirt?
Leave the dirt.
Where is the drop off? Is it on the dirt side, or is it on the mulch side? Where is the, um, slope?
This the line?
Did you hear that question?
Is the slope along the mulch trail, or is the slope on the dirt trail?
Yeah, the slope is on the mulch trail. That is the steepest part.
So you're okay with paving the very sloopy part? The non-ADA compliant, you're okay with paving? I'm confused, I, it doesn't make sense.
So, so let me add to that. You're okay with paving that and giving a payment in lieu for the earthen trail, but you don't want to connect it, just like, I'm not doing that.
Correct.
And if the town decided, hey, we've investigated this, it's okay to do, they had the money and they could do it.
Well, we don't have the rights, but there's no easement there that.
Oh, okay.
The applicant can offer that, but this is a private trail.
So I'm trying to put all the pieces together here.
Yeah, I understand, and I appreciate your attempt to find the right solution.
So, let me, let me try to understand this. So you are willing to pave the red part as long as it's not required to connect up?
Yeah, so.
Because that way you don't have culpability with the ADA?
The concern I have is the moment you provide a connection from point A to point A, point B, the, the concern is you need to provide it for people who, uh, who can make that, you know, who can handle those stairs, but also for people who cannot. So if you provide it for one, you have to provide it for everybody. That's essentially the way the law works. But if we're not connecting point A to point B, you can have stairs on your site if it's not essentially providing a connection from one point to the next.
Stairs to nowhere are okay.
But, that's really odd. Um, but if the, if you did, let's say you did that, you agreed to doing that, and you gave the town the easement for that, what I'll call that gold section, the earthen trail, and we came back later and paved that, do you feel like you are still culpable? Like, you'll still be?
I, I, there would still be concerns I would have, I, I would have on behalf of my client, and that is that now you have a continuous paved connection from one point to the next, and you don't have an ADA compliant option for people who can't make that connection.
But don't we all agree that the pathway that you showed us going out to the east is a, is an alternative for ADA compliance?
Yeah, I, I, I maintain that, yes. I mean, and those sidewalks are required, I mean, it's private property, we're required to provide ADA compliant sidewalks, yes. I mean, that's kind of the gen- that's, you've hit our argument on its head in terms of why we thought our option was reasonable, and that is that for people who want to make that trek, they have, they have that option available.
They have the option.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, I agree with you. I think they do have that option if they want to, if they're so, in such a situation where they cannot navigate the trail, they could use the alternate route, even though it's two thousand feet, in which case we could make this mulch trail and the earthen trail, anything we wanted that we think is most likely to appeal to those who are using it. Right?
I'm not sure I understand.
Is there an option, so let me ask, maybe ask what I think you're asking differently. If you provided the easement of the earthen trail to the town, and the town were then to pave it, and I, this is a hypothetical, Ms. Glover, do you still have that culpability because that part, it's just the same culpability that's on the greenway?
I'm guessing we both do. But you're the lawyer, but.
There's the potential, and, and I want to be clear, I, again, it, I, it's, it's not dispositive that there would be liability in this instance, so I don't want to suggest that there would be liability in these instances. I'm just describing for you risk, risk concerns that ownership has associated with providing a connection to the greenway that is not ADA compliant, um, and, 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 and encouraging, um, you know, non-ADA compliant, uh, a, a connection. That's, that's all I'm trying to describe for you. So again, it's not, it's not a matter of us saying we will be liable in the event that we provide connection X. It is, it just, it, there's an increase, you know, increased risk associated with providing a connection that's not ADA compliant.
What is different when you put steps one way and, uh, a wheelchair ramp or something compliant another way? What's different about saying, here's where the steps are, and here's the ADA way, and you get more exercise? I, I don't understand. What, what, the switchback is just a really long switchback. It goes two thousand feet around this way. Have you not accomplished the same thing, given them connectivity to the same trail from your property?
Right.
Here's the ADA way, here's the non-ADA way. Have you not provided ADA connect, connectivity?
Right, and, and, and that's true, but I think the argument could be flipped on its head, and that is, well, if it's okay for, for the, for people who need the ADA compliant access, if it's okay for them to make that circuitous path, why can't people who don't need the ADA accessible route, why can't they be making that as well?
Well, you got the same argument with the switchback, is that why don't some people, when wheelchairs, just go down the steps versus they go down the switchback? You haven't, you, you've made a circuitous route for some person because they're in a wheelchair.
Yeah, and I think, and again, I just.
And a lot of people, one argument would be that a lot of people like to do a loop, and so by giving them two routes to the greenway, it provides you a full loop that they can then use.
Sure, yeah, I'm just saying, it's, I agree with you, there, there, you know, there's plenty instances where you've got a circuitous path. The question is, is it reasonable, is two thousand feet a reasonable circuitous path as compared to the non-ADA compliant one that we would be providing for, for the, for the direct connection?
So, so I want to try to summarize this up, because I think we're going around in circles here. Um, I think some of the options we have, make them pave it all. That's an option. I, I, I think the council's leaning toward the red that's shown on the map. We want that to be a hard surface. So option, one of the options is have them pave it all. Another option would be that have them pave the red and payment in lieu. I don't know if we can ask that. Payment in lieu and, and right of way.
I'm not sure if staff would be supportive of that. Again, that would be something we'd want to discuss before committing to that, so I think at this point, we'd rather not.
So that's not an option. So it sounds like our options, have them pave it all or not?
Or table.
Or. Or table it, which.
Or override the staff. I mean, there are, I mean, they're giving us a recommendation. It's our job to make the judgment.
If I, one point of clarification, if you request an easement, you need to define what that easement is, is an access easement? Does it imply maintenance by the town? Does it not require maintenance? The requirement right now is for it to be a private trail connection, so maintained by the property owner. Would this change that for a portion of it, and clarify town maintained? If, if that's the council's will, so be it, but I think we'd need some clarity on that in the decision.
How long is the earthen trail component of this? Does anyone know? How many feet?
It looks to be about a hundred feet, uh, based on the, the buffer length, you know, measuring using the urban transition buffer and News River buffer.
And that's not a slope? That, that's not a significant slope?
That's correct.
Yeah, that's the bottom of the stream, you can see the stream, I mean, it follows the stream.
Okay.
Okay, I, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay, so do we have any other questions or comments before we move out of the deliberative phase? Not, we'll close the public comment portion of the hearing, and I'll recognize Ms. Robinson.
Okay. I think that this vote depends on whether or not we, as this, you know, citizen body, perceives that the two-thousand-foot option is ADA, satisfies ADA compliant. So I make this motion out of my belief that it does. And so with that, I make a motion to, um, require, I don't know if I can, this language works well, but, um, to approve the, um, well, I guess, let me see, uh, I make a motion that we require the applicant to pave the mulch trail and earthen trail in addition to their concrete walkway, and I'm, and approve the route that they have shown us.
So you'd be approving the modification request of the applicant, which is not to meet the town's standards on slope, et cetera, um, with the condition that they pave what is shown on the slide on the screen as the area labeled Mulch Trail?
You're so good at that, yes, everything she just.
And I second that.
I'm sorry, did you include the earthen trail?
I did.
Oh, you didn't pave the whole thing? Okay, sorry. I think we already had that condition, I'm not sure if the motion sheet for this case got in front of you.
Oh, it is, actually.
It is, number one, it's listed, number one.
It's perfectly number one.
Okay, I don't have it in front of me this time.
Okay, so for the reasons discussed, I move that we approve the modification request made by the applicant, as the request meets all the approval criteria of the applicable sections of the LDO, and this approval is conditioned upon the following, that the applicant shall provide a paved trail in the location depicted on the development plan as a mulch and dirt trail.
And I second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion.
Yeah. I think the, the good compromise is to pave the mulch portion, put little, what needed steps and stuff are in there, and leave the earthen trail, the earthen trail. I appreciate the applicant's concerns for liability, um, culpability. The earthen trail already exists. And I have all the faith that an office building like this will be maintained, the grounds will be maintained to a very high level. I would hate to require something on someone to find out that we put them in a very bad legal position a year, two, three, four from now.
I agree with Mr. France. I mean, I don't think there's a good answer to this. I think our discussion has proved that. I don't think whatever we decide is going to be a good answer tonight, but I think Mr. Francis hits it closer than, than the motion.
I agree.
And I respectfully, um, disagree. I think one of the things that's unique about, uh, regency and having been there so many times during the day and watching people walk is the cleanliness and the ease and the accessibility that people have to walk during the day. And I see them walk at all times, and to have an earthen trail there, um, for a Class I office space, I know the first thing that people will ask is, why is it all muddy where I have to walk from the, from my beautiful walk at lunch, from my meet, walking meeting, to come in? And, and, and actually, I would be on the same page with you all if the applicant hadn't offered to pave something that wasn't ADA compliant, right? If they said, oh, we really don't want to pave that long red swatch because we don't feel it's really safe for ADA, but our real issue is making the complete connection. I would have said, oh, well, you know, they really are concerned about that. So that kind of pushed some of my buttons and said, you know what? I think we need to do the right thing, and maybe there should be a sign there that says, hey, by the way, there's stairs up ahead, if that's hard for you, like there are at Hemlock Bluffs. It says in Hemlock Bluffs, this is slippery, uh, don't walk. If you've got a cane, don't go this way. You know, there's lots of things that could be done. But I think the beauty of this whole area, this whole regency office park, is the ability to be able to walk and to enjoy it, and to come into the office with clean shoes afterwards.
And I think that's particularly important to females. We, we don't have all-purpose shoes like some of you guys wear, where you have like three pairs of shoes and you wear them around all the time. I mean, it's, our shoes are basically made out of cheap leather and cardboard. I mean, they're just crappy shoes. I'm serious, and, and they're, they're often high heels, even like a, a small heel. I mean, I can't tell you how much of an impediment having an earthen trail is for a female trying to get out and take a walk. It's, it's more than you might think it is, and I think that it renders the entire pathway almost useless to a lot of people if they are going to have to get down to the bottom and then turn around because they, they're not going to traverse across the earthen path and, and ruin their shoes, or ruin the bottom of their, you know, pants or whatever. I mean, I just, I really think that it's a mistake doing that.
Other comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No.
Motion fails four to three. Next motion, please.
Make a motion, for, for the reasons discussed, I move that we approve the modification request made by the applicant, as the request meets all the approval criteria of the applicable sections of the LDO. This approval is conditioned upon the following, that the applicant shall provide a paved trail in the location depicted on the development plan up to the earthen trail.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries five to two. Everything in order, Ms. Silverstein?
We still got to do the development plan.
Oh, we still got to do the development.
For the reasons discussed, I move that we approve the proposed development plan with the conditions as stated below, as it meets the approval criteria set forth in section three point nine point two I of the LDO. The conditions approval is conditioned upon the following, that the applicant must satisfactorily address all remaining Development Review Committee comments on the master plan set, submitted for signature.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's unanimous. Everything in order, Ms. Silverstein? All right, we'll close this public hearing. We're going to take a five-minute recess before we hit our last public. We'll reconvene our council meeting at this time, and we're at our third public hearing, the Silverton Swim Club. The item is before us tonight as an application and is asking for a modification. As I've said earlier, tonight's evidentiary hearing, more like a court case. Council members act like judge and they can only accept evidence that is competent material and substantial. The Constitution really ties our hand on what evidence we can accept. I apologize in advance for what might be burdensome, complex process. To those that are with us this evening intending to testify that are not qualified as experts, we can only accept testimony from you that is factual or what you have observed. Our contractual attorney, who's sitting to my left, will help us determine who's an expert and what evidence we can consider. The hearing procedures and detailed rules are on the printed agenda. All speakers who would like to speak during this public hearing must be administered an oath by the town clerk, Mrs. Johnson, who's to my right. And we'll pause at this time to allow those individuals who'd like to speak at the public hearing to approach Mrs. Johnson and receive their oath.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll now ask council members if they've had any site visits, expertise, communications, financial relationships, specialized knowledge, or close relationship to an affected person to disclose, starting with Mr. Yurha.
No, sir.
Ms. Bush.
No, sir.
Mr. France.
No.
I haven't. Mr. Smith.
Nor I.
Ms. Robinson. Mr. Jorg.
I've swam there.
Based on disclosures you've heard from council members, I invite any party to the podium at this time who has an objection to a council member's participation in this meeting. No one will continue, and I'll open the quasi-judicial public hearing. And we'll, please tell me who you are.
I am Desmond Corley. I am a new planner here with the town.
Welcome, Desmond.
Welcome.
Desmond will introduce this item for the staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. This case is a request for a modification as proposed by Silverton Swim Club. The applicant is requesting that council accept a zero-dollar payment in lieu of required road improvements to Evans Road associated with proposed development on the subject property. The property is at the intersection of Winfair Drive and Evans Road is south of Northwest Cary Parkway. These are the existing conditions of the site. As you can see, it's just a pool and tennis courts. You might be able to see that Evans Road, or this portion of Evans Road, is currently a four-lane road. And the proposed development is just to enclose the pool with a covering to allow for year-round use of the pool. The planned roadway widths map and the Cary community plan calls for this portion of Evans Road to be a five-lane thoroughfare roadway section. The green line indicates that, and the blue line is another indication. But the applicant is here to talk about required improvements to Evans Road. And per the LDO, the applicant is required to make improvements to Evans Road along the frontage of the subject property, or they may request to make a payment in lieu of those improvements. Any request for a payment in lieu less than 100% is required to be approved by this body. And the applicant is asking that council, again, accept a zero-dollar payment in lieu. That's why we're here this evening. That concludes my brief introduction to this case, and I will now introduce the applicant's representative.
Thank you. At this time, I'll call on the applicant's attorney to present arguments and evidence in support of the application by addressing the applicable approval criteria.
Thank you, Mayor. We're on back members of the council. My name is Jamie Schwedler with Parker Poe, Adams &amp; Bernstein. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, which is actually, the landowner is H2O Ventures LLC, but it is a property that was purchased for the Marlins of Raleigh to use as a swim facility, take it from a current summer swim facility to a year-round facility. I'd like to thank the staff for, not only Desmond, but the extended staff for working with us through the many questions that we had and bring us here tonight. They've been extremely helpful and knowledgeable. And I'd also like to point out that this request is slightly different from the one that you heard earlier. It involves different linear foot and different road improvements. But the most unique part is that the change that we're making to this plan is resulting in no new traffic. The rezoning went before the council some time ago, and the TIA was not determined to increase that traffic. And we'll hear from several witnesses tonight to speak to that impact. And so this request is supported by the findings clearly under the LDO standards, but it's also the right result here. H2O Ventures purchased this property not to turn a huge profit, to provide an amenity to this part of Cary that doesn't currently have it. There's a summer swim facility, which has been operation for years, but it's fallen on some disrepair. And they came in and made substantial improvements, made investments in both the deck and of course, the substantial cost of the pool structure. But the reason they're doing it is to bring a national-level, year-round facility to a part of Cary that doesn't have that service and to provide that to the citizens where that doesn't currently exist. There's, the development review for this was divided into two plans. One was just dealing with the dedication of the right-of-way and some upfits to the buildings. Now, in this development plan, we're dealing with the pool enclosure, that will actually enclose a pool and make it available for year-round swim. Mr. Silver, Paul Silver, is one of the principals of that entity. He could not be here tonight because he's actually with seven swimmers at Nationals in Long Island. But he did send one of the board members from Marlins of Raleigh that will talk a little bit about the improvements in the plan. And so as Desmond explained, the road improvements here are existing, four lanes. The Cary future roadway width map calls out for this to be a five-lane thoroughfare. We did dedicate the extra 10 feet in the previous development plan to allow for that full extent of right-of-way. This just deals with the actual extension of the lanes and moving the sidewalk from its existing location. And so you'll hear from Mr. Matt Shade on the board of Marlins of Raleigh. You'll also hear tonight from Mr. Brad Hart, who helped us develop the payment in lieu estimate and worked with transportation and facilities about how that cost estimate was developed. And Mr. Earl Llewellyn, who looked at the traffic impacts proposed here and helped us develop an opinion about why those improvements are not necessary or desirable at this time. And as you listen to this evidence, I'd like you not only note that how it meets, squarely meets the two findings here that are on your screen, but also gets to the right result. We're providing an amenity that Cary needs in this location, that's a benefit to the overall community, and will pay back the town in spades in that goodwill and the welfare of the citizens. Without this relief, the goals of providing the community amenities that are set forth in the Cary community plan and the policies of protecting existing mature vegetation simply cannot be met. You'll hear some testimony and see some pictures tonight about the existing tree canopy out there that's substantial, that would take decades to replace. And so simply granting this payment in lieu request would enable us to keep those trees and that canopy in place tonight, complying with the LDO. And with that, I'd like to call our first witness, Mr. Matt Shade.
Good evening. I'm Matt Shade. Been on the board of Marlins of Raleigh since 2006. Before that, I was actually a year-round swim coach with Paul Silver, starting in 1998. And then probably better than that, my son swam with him since 2003. Just finished his swim career at Arizona State University. So swimming's a pretty big deal in our house. This is project, we've been, Paul and I have talked about this for almost 20 years. But real quick about Marlins of Raleigh and kind of a little bit about what this pool will do for them. This is supposed to, Marlins of Raleigh is the second-ranked team in the U.S. This, I don't know if many of you know, but Raleigh, this triangle area is one of the top five areas for swimming in all of the United States. We have 30, over 35 swimmers, swimming on college teams, on scholarships. The Marlins of Raleigh will use this pool to provide not just year-round swimming, but lessons, community service, lifeguarding classes, winter swim leagues, and so many other things. They'll also use it as a therapeutic opportunities and some adult fitness opportunities. There's some local businesses that can use that for master swimming. When in closing this, we'll allow our swim team more to swim year-round in an area that we need it. The west side of Cary doesn't really have this pool, and we need a year-round facility, and this will do that. So we have a pretty good opportunity here to do that, but quite honestly, this is a swim team and not a real estate developer, so we're kind of at our end with money. So to be, we're a little concerned that the, doing the upgrade and some of the things that are asked, we just won't be able to do. So we'll see how that goes, but we ask that you grant the request and allow us to get this done so that we can start in October with the services that we need to provide. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have just one question for my witness. Can you inform the town council of about how much the investment has been to date in improvements?
Sure. Yeah, we've, there's been an investment of a little over $600,000 already into the improvements into this facility, a little bit more than we had anticipated. But as we stated earlier, the facility was a little bit under-kept and needed some updates to get to code and meet some of the ADA requirements that you all talked about in the last. Can we go back through switchbacks again? Okay, maybe not. But yeah, that's, so we had, there's been quite a bit, and the timeline's been already extended a little bit longer than we thought, but we still think we can get this done before October comes. And due to the, you know, we live in a state that allows for swimming outdoors, at least through September. So we should be okay through then, but we really need to be in the pool year-round, covered pool in October so that we can get training up and running again. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shade. I'd like to call Mr. Brad Hart.
Let's see here. Good evening. My name's Brad Hart. I'm a registered professional engineer with Withers Ravenel here in Cary. My involvement on the, excuse me, my involvement on the project has been focused on what the theoretical widening of Evans Road across the project frontage would look like, as well as developing the estimate that's before you for what the payment in lieu of the widening would be. What we did was got a copy of the existing conditions survey that was part of the site plan submittal package from the owner. I went and visited the site, verified what the conditions looked like in the field versus what was on paper. And you can see on this slide here, this photo was taken on Evans Road at the intersection of Winfair, where just past the intersection on the right is the swimming pool. And then here is a little bit further down on the east side of the project, looking back west with the swimming pool on your left, and you can see the large, mature red oaks that are there along the shoulder of the road. There's about nine of them that would be impacted by the road widening, impacting being removed. There's a couple of them that are actually right behind the existing curb, between the curb and the sidewalk, and then the others are just behind the sidewalk. Now, this shot is back at the intersection of Winfair and Evans, again, basically looking straight down the curb line of Evans Road where you can see the row of trees right there in the middle of the photo, or along the section of the curb that we will be widening. Since the proposed improvements to the Swim Club facility required a development plan submittal, the LDO requires that, you know, adjoining thoroughfares got to be widened to its current section that's designated in the Cary community plan and the future roadway widths map. So today, it's a 52-foot back-to-back road and a 70-foot right-of-way. The ultimate section calls for 69 feet back-to-back and a 90-foot right-of-way. So along there, half of the road width, it means widening the road by eight and a half feet and installing a new sidewalk at the proper offset from the new curb line. Now, like Jamie had mentioned before, the 10 feet of right-of-way dedication is already being taken care of as part of the site plan package, so that's not associated with this request or payment in lieu request. So again, so basically, if you look down this photo right here, a couple of trees right behind the curb are gone. So the project means widening the back of curb such that the back of the curb in this section would basically be into where you see the sidewalk now. And then the sidewalk would have to get moved back depending, the sidewalk's not at a constant width off of the curb now, so depending on which section of the frontage, the sidewalk would get moved back between four and 10 feet from where you see it today. This slide is really just an image of the theoretical road widening plan that we prepared and submitted for staff review along with the estimate. The top half is the existing conditions and highlights some of the areas of the pavement and curb and gutter and sidewalk that would be subject to demolition. And then the bottom half represents what the final product would look like, with the hatched area being the extent of the new pavement widening. There's a little bit of incidental storm drainage extensions and catch basin modifications that were included in the estimate that are ancillary to that work. And then just wrapping up, you know, you can see this image, one looking up the road, one looking down the road, what the widening would do to that streetscape and the red oaks. So I think we've talked a lot this evening, or I haven't, but I've heard a lot about preserving trees and streetscapes and stuff, so that's what's before you today. So if you guys got any questions about the road widening, I'd be glad to try and answer them. them. Now, Earl Llewellyn can talk some more about, you know, traffic and the transportation facilities as a whole along this corridor.
Thank you.
I just have two questions for you, Mr. Hart. About how many trees would be lost there to the edge of the sidewalk with the widening?
By my count, nine. So, there's two of them that are obviously gone because they're right behind the curb now, and then there's seven others in this stretch that would be in the way of moving the sidewalk back and/or the grading. You can see the trees, a couple of them that are right behind the sidewalk now are in an area where they're mounded up. And, you know, widening and leveling out the shoulder, you basically would be putting the sidewalk just into the tree and having to lower the grade a couple of feet, so it would definitely have to go.
And what height or maturity are those trees today?
Well, I haven't taken any measure of, been able to measure them or done any sort of method of measuring them, but I'd say 50 or 60 feet. They're like 22-inch caliper trees on average, so that's usually, you know, somewhere like a 60-foot tree. They're mature.
Thank you, Mr. Hart.
Sure, thank you.
And next, I'd like to call Mr. Earl Llewellyn.
Good evening. Earl Llewellyn, traffic engineer with Kimbley Horn &amp; Associates. I'm a registered professional engineer in North Carolina with 28 years of experience in the traffic engineering field.
I'd like to tender Mr. Llewellyn as an expert in traffic engineering.
Very good.
Thank you.
As mentioned earlier, this project as proposed includes really only a cover to the pool itself and associated landscaping. As a result, the subject site plan is not expected to result in additional either daily or peak hour trips, as I think has been referenced in the staff report. Instead, it simply allows for the current operations to continue into the winter months. This is reinforced, as I said, by the fact that a traffic study was not required as part of this project. It doesn't trigger the threshold. However, I have conducted both a daily segmental analysis, traffic capacity of Evans Road, as well as the adjacent intersection with Cary Parkway, and find that Evans Road operates well below its capacity, in fact, about only 20, excuse me, 42% of its current capacity as a four-lane roadway. So, therefore, it's my professional opinion that the subject improvement is not necessary at this time, particularly given the lack of traffic impact for this specific project. Happy to answer any questions, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Llewellyn.
Just wrapping up, I think based on this evidence, we would submit that our request for the alternative payment-in-lieu satisfies the two factors fairly clearly. First, although the expansion to five lanes has been identified on the Cary Community Plan Future Roadwidths Map as something that's necessary in the future, installation of the improvements at this time is not necessary. This use is not generating the new traffic that the purpose of this LDO section is usually associated with. The whole point of requiring owners to make the improvements associated with their development plan is when you're generating that new traffic and you're mitigating against those impacts on the adjacent roads. That's not what we have here, and the evidence that Mr. Llewellyn just gave in his expert testimony shows that there's very little to no impact on the traffic in terms of the daily trips by extending it from that summer use to the winter. It's also not desirable. We've seen pictures of these beautiful stands of trees. Mr. Hart testified that these were about 50 to 60 feet in height and a mature height, about nine of them would have to be completely eliminated to provide the same facility that is there today. We have an existing sidewalk that's functioning and providing connectivity along this road, and so, requiring the removal of that canopy is just something that's not desirable at this time, and the improvements would cause that undesirable effect. We, in fact, take decades to regain that canopy that we've lost. And to the second factor, the amount of the payment-in-lieu advances the goals of the LDO. There are numerous areas of the Cary Community Plan we could pull from, but we chose these three. That the amount would provide indoor recreation facilities in an area of Cary. B, that they would preserve existing vegetation and tree canopy, which is a goal of the LDO. And at C, to minimize lane expansion. I'll just walk through each of those fairly quickly. In the Chapter Five Engage section, we have the Parks Recreation and Cultural Resources Master Plan that talks about development of future indoor facilities to meet the needs of a growing population in Western Cary. And here, providing this, allowing us to do the $0 payment-in-lieu would allow us to continue to bring this facility to bear and eliminating the town's need to expand on its own and build those facilities itself. Second, preserving the existing vegetation and tree canopy. There's numerous parts of the Cary Community Plan that talk about protecting and preserving the tree canopy where we can. We endeavor to require our developers to maintain existing vegetation. There's even a call-out in terms of preserving deciduous and evergreen trees and trying to get the maturity of 60 feet. We already have that here. And so, allowing that $0 payment-in-lieu allows the developer to bring this amenity without going against any of these preservation and protection of vegetation policies that the town has so clearly put out, both in Chapter Eight and in the LDO. And finally, there's a policy in the Move section of the Cary Community Plan that talks about minimizing lane expansion where we can. Policy Five states that streets being widened to add additional lanes should be limited to four-through lanes. That's what we have today, wherever possible. Any expansions beyond the standard should be focused in areas with the highest levels of congestion and critical bottlenecks. Mr. Llewellyn just offered his expert testimony that this road is actually operating under capacity and that this use in particular will not cause a significant increase in impact. And for those reasons, we'd submit that we've satisfied both of the required elements of this request, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This time, I'd invite speakers who've been sworn in who'd like to speak in support of the application to approach the podium, and I'd invite our first speaker forward. Saying no one will continue, we'll open the hearing. For those who are opposed to the request, as a reminder to those testifying, please limit your testimony to facts that you know the applicant's representative has a right to object to your testimony, and she may object while you're speaking. They have that right. Our contractual attorney sitting beside me may help council determine what is evidence and what we may consider. And I'll invite those in opposition to approach at this time, one at a time. Anyone in opposition, saying no one will continue, and recognize staff once again to provide professional observations about the requests.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I will actually ask Ken Dunn from Transportation and Facilities to offer his observations on this request.
Thank you again. Good evening. The applicant was very thorough in what they put together. I'll try to be very brief. A lot of my observations matched what they had noted. The right-of-way was dedicated with the previous development plan. We agree with that. The traffic information provided with the previous rezoning for the site and the proposed use was determined to be similar to the traffic anticipated with what they are proposing. The adjoining properties have not been improved to a five-lane section, so keeping this consistent, or adding the new improvements would not provide much traffic benefit at this time. And we did work with Brad Hart PE to estimate the cost of the construction for the required street improvements. The estimated value of that, of a payment-in-lieu for that would be $201,800. And that's all I've got. Thank you, and I'll be available for questions if you need.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Any cross-examination of Mr. Dunn?
No, Mayor.
All right. Any evidence been presented this evening that requires a continuance of this hearing? Nope. All right, we'll move into the deliberative phase of the hearing, open it. Up to council members for questions or comments. I'll start with one simple question, I hope. Is this facility for training and competition? And if it's for competition, you spoke of a national team. Do we expect national competitions?
Yeah, I can answer that. There will be no meets at this pool at all, no competitions, except for three summer swim meets for the TSA that currently happen already at this pool and has happened for many years. That's the only three.
Thank you. Other questions?
The only, I'd just like to compliment the applicant and the folks you brought tonight for a very thoughtful, professional, thorough presentation, when you could have easily just got up and say, "All we're doing is putting a roof on a pool, and it's kind of unreasonable to expect us to pay to widen a road." It's kind of what I looked at, when I looked at the staff report.
Nice summary.
And that's kind of still the way I feel about it, so I wholeheartedly support the request and would be happy to make a motion when the time.
Well, I just have one really important question. I didn't see something really important, changing the name to Marlins of Cary? Because it's Marlins of Raleigh right now. Is that?
No. We are not changing the name. It is what it is. And actually, the...
I didn't make it a condition, but I thought it was pretty interesting.
Well, and it is interesting that the head coach is Paul Silver, so Silverton works pretty well.
There you go. We're halfway there.
Other questions or comments before we move to the motion portion? All right, we'll close the public comment portion of the hearing and ask council members for, a council member for a motion or on the modification.
For the reasons discussed, I move that we approve the modification request made by the applicant, as the request meets all of the approval criteria of the applicable sections of the LDO.
A second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's unanimous. This is so much nicer than the last.
You should have done this one first.
So, are there any other outstanding issues, Mr. Silverton? If not, we'll close.
Silverton, you just told us.
Silverstein. Silverstein. I move the meeting be adjourned. I second.
No rush, you second.
Oh, thank you. We'll close the public hearing, and there's a motion and a second to adjourn.
Don't move.
All right, discussion. I am really thrown by this. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned, thank you.